Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show it is 9:00 a.m., June 29th. Mr. Vogel, sir, would you do the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in my heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Madam Secretary, we could conduct the roll, please.
Mr. Flower.
Present.
Mr. Candor.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Yep.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda?
Negative from me.
Okay. Uh, nor do I. Approval of the Board of County Commissioners minutes of June 20 and June 25. Chair would entertain a motion to such.
I'll move we approve both of those.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
We moved and seconded to approve the Board of County Commissioners minutes from the meetings of June 20 and June 25. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay. Motion carried. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Those were two rough sets, I can tell ya.
Yeah, those might go down.
In history.
They might.
For being two of the shorter.
The shortest.
Shorter meetings.
One-pageers.
Yep. Commissioner Items, who would care to start this morning? Mr. Prince?
Thank you.
Would you like to have audience?
Oh!
I want to know who these guys are. All our bosses are here, we want to know who they are.
Thank you, thank you. Would you care to start with audience introductions, ma'am?
Jackie Bubus for Sentinel.
Sandy Tessier.
Steven Young.
Dale Miller.
Dan Tessier.
Angie Artiber.
Greg Smith.
Charles Vogel.
Dale Mullin.
Quentin Weber.
John Johnston.
Dave McCann.
Okay, thank you. Tessier.
Yes.
Interesting.
I don't know.
Louisiana?
No, Canada.
Oh, Canada.
Canada.
And how would the spelling of that be?
T-E-S-S-I-E-R.
Okay.
Tessier.
And I'm assuming our clerk had it spelled exactly.
Just like it sounds. I bet she had it the first time, too.
So, French Canadian, not Cajun.
Same thing.
Well, probably.
I don't think so. Maybe something got picked up.
Well, welcome. I think other people in the audience have been here this first time I've seen you guys here, so welcome. Welcome to everyone as well. Quentin, nice to have you here, sir. Good, okay. Now, Prince, if you care to start?
Thanks, sir. On June 21st, I along with the other commissioners met with the budget workshop. On the 23rd, I attended my daughter's wedding. That is not a commissioner item, but I just wanted to announce it to you. On the 18th, I met with the President of Tourism Board, private discussion. On the 25th, we had the Planning and Zoning Public Meeting. I attended the Attainable Housing Committee yesterday. And last night, I met with a group of concerned citizens. That's what I've done since our last meeting.
Okay, all right, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Candor.
Yeah, lots happened since our last Board of Commissioners meeting. I missed the San Isabel one, personal problem. We straightened right out. And anyway, so lots gone on. I just want to bring up a couple things, though, and we'll cover all these in detail. It's awful dry out there, as we know, got the fires and all that going on, but even that affects us all even as directly are the dry roads that we have here. And we've been getting a lot of calls from everybody. With dry roads, it, as you turn the corners, the dirt gets pushed out in front of the tires. Once it starts vibrating, you get the washboards, and it happens quickly. And in the past, we didn't have our water trucks in full force, so it's a little harder to keep them packed and keep them down. We've got them back now. And so I just wanted to remind everybody, we're doing, we have prioritized roads. And what's been good, since the last time I asked you all, I like hearing from you all, and I get a lot of people reporting on their particular part of the road. And of course, their particular part of the road is most important. Doesn't matter how many are on that road, that's the meanest road in town. So, just want you to know, be patient, we are prioritizing them. I drive those roads. Gary's out there all the time, Gary Hyde, watching the roads. And we are prioritizing them where they're the heaviest traveled. And I know that's, doesn't sound good, but what we try to do is, and we are using all the money that we're allocated, and we're not holding anything back. Luckily, we didn't have a snowstorm, and unluckily, we haven't had a lot of rain. But, so we haven't used any emergency funds for washed-out roads or snowing. So we're using those to mag chloride everywhere we can, but that's expensive. Our intent is to keep mag chloriding until it packs up enough. And if you've driven the Fremont County roads, you see they're kind of nice, because over the years, they loaded a lot of mag chloride on them, and it's easier to keep them in good shape. So that's a big deal there. Airport, airport meeting went well. Also, we have completed, I mentioned this the last time, the testing on that runway. We haven't got the test results back. I just got a call from the testing organization, so I asked them to tell us what's going on. I'll know something more after the meeting, probably. But I do know that the prime contractor, Armstrong Engineering, has put out an RFP for the surveying of the dirt work that needs to be done out there, both removing the berm as well as putting in the new taxiway and the ramp and all that kind of things going to be done. So he's getting that out to bid, so that's in parallel with us knowing what the load capabilities are going to be. That runway is gonna, no doubt, based on the core samples, be fine enough to carry a pretty heavy airplane out there. They're expecting that. That's good news for us. Also, we're working the cleanup out there at the airport, and the Airport Board will be in here to report on all those activities here next time. Jay mentioned the budget meeting. It was a great budget meeting, especially for me and probably Tom, because now we understand a little more the history of those funds and the requirements on the funds that help us allocate the new budget for next year. So we're getting started on that. I thought it was great. The broadband workshop happened also, and that was very good. Charles Vogel had, what was the name of the company?
S&amp;G.
S&amp;G.
Strategic Networks.
Right, and they did the survey, that many, many of you took part in that survey and reported the results of that, and I thought that was good to have in our hip pocket. Worked with Action 22, that's the 22 counties in the southeastern part of the state that we are a member of. And they are doing a lot better at getting us more active in the legislative actions that affect this end of the state, especially given the fire conditions and things like that. So that's a good thing happening. We're also going to work a request today for a transfer of, an issue that we'll have Clint bring up here at the end, is the fire well in Bloomingdale subdivision. We'll talk about that at the end of the meeting. And Lookout Mountain land swap, I mentioned it before. The BLM's going to be down here the end of July with the director, I think he's called the director, out of Washington DC for the BLM, government guy. And they're taking him around the state on all the BLM issues and things that are going on, and they want to show them what they've got at the top of Lookout Mountain, which is where the antennas are for the old TV, what we call the wavebender and the communications towers that are up there. And so we're working with Kit Chi and what BLM ground we have nearby to swap and make that a, two things. One, we take that on as there are, we already maintain the road up there, anyway. It's a great spot for a campsite, actually, on part of the trails initiative that we have in the county. Be a nice thing to get up there and take a look at the picnic area up there. It's one item. The Judicial Center, we met, had a good meeting on the status of where we are with the MOU we signed with the organization, or the family that owns the ground around the center here. We're waiting for that negotiation to complete, and we'll know where we are. But better yet, we had a meeting, both Tom and I attended, and it was with, what was the name of that, the Central Front Range Transportation Planning Region? That's several commissioners, Park County, Teller, Fremont County, us. Chaffey County gets together, talks with the DOT, Department of Transportation, on projects that they have projected for the year. You might have noticed the repair going on, south end of 69. That was one of the projects that are funded by grants and other things. They're going to be looking to do the north end, go from town out toward Highway 50 in a year or so. But it was interesting to find out, there's other projects that we have a vested interest in, and one of them is a rotary request for a garage at Barn, maybe updating their vehicles for the local transportation around the area that they do to, for the Valley Assisted Living people, people that are stuck in different places. And they had originally put in only a request for like 40,000 bucks for a garage. And the lady that's in charge of that says, "That's just not enough, and you need to think of the bigger picture." So they're going in for a million dollars. And that would include things like a bigger garage, a better van service, whatever. We don't know yet. And then we'll see what we get in the way of grants to do that. It's a pretty neat thing. And at that same time, we got talking with the county commissioners, and that Judicial Center discussing that, and it turns out that Park County, Teller County, both have had experiences in building jails and judicial centers, courthouses, county buildings recently. So we've asked them to come up and give us a briefing on their lessons learned. They said they had a terrible time, I think it was Park County that had a problem with the jail. And there was a lot of hiccups on that that we can avoid by listening to what they did. Also, the good things, they did a county building, and they did it in three months, in three years. So that helps us gauge what we can do, what our planning range might be, and we'll take advantage of all that to come up with our plans, which are really in the infancy. We've just gotten started on thinking beyond, as you know, we're at our peak right here in the courthouse building and county buildings that we have in the jails, and we need to be thinking forward. So that was great. The zoning, I thought was probably the shortest meeting in history. We approved the zoning workshop, and we got through that, and they did a great job of, of course, the long part was getting there to that short meeting that the, I want to give the Planning Commission a pat on the back. They worked hard over the last couple of years, actually, in updating the zoning regulations for the county. And let's see, I think that's enough of me talking for a while.
What were your impressions of Mountain Connect?
Oh, Mountain Connect, I thought was a good thing to Charles and Dale and I. We're up there, I mentioned a little bit of that before, but we were up at the broadband meeting in Keystone, or was it Vail? No, it was Vail. The other, CCI was Keystone. That was good, because we got to meet and listen to lessons learned and things forward from the different counties' points of view on different kinds of broadband applications. And Charles and Dale had the opportunity to talk to the Fed's representative that's working the grant. You know, we've got a million dollars planned, we're still waiting for approval on the last million dollars, and then we'll decide how we attack the future here, based on what we get back on that. I thought that was good, and we made lots of good connections. And as a matter of fact, I talked to the Verizon guys, and that kind of brings us up to a discussion we'll have with Verizon on an antenna for eight, 911, or whatever it was. We'll talk about that. Okay, thanks.
Good. Thank you, sir. A couple of things I want to mention, and then I'll get into my calendar. I had a gentleman come in a couple days ago, very concerned about our drought susceptibility to fire. And he said, "You know, I just really am concerned about this 4th of July." He's a rancher. And he said, "I know we're going to get a lot of people coming into this valley." He said, "I am not convinced that everybody coming into this valley will know we're in a stage-two fire ban and what that means."
It's true.
And I said, "You know, you've got a good point." I said, "Just on a whim, while you're here, let me make a quick phone call." So I dug out a phone number, and I called Mark Gochu with CDOT, and said, "Mark, concerned up here, we're going to have a lot of people come into our valley in the next week, may or may not know about our fire ban. Is there any chance we could get a couple of portable digital highway signs?" And he said, "What do you want me to read?" And I, "I guess probably stage-two fire ban." And then I said, "Well, you know what, I'm not sure that's enough. How about if they said absolutely no open fires?" He said, "I'll call you back." That gentleman was still sitting here, in three or four minutes, he called me back, and he said, "I'll have a sign at Hillside, and I'll have a sign at Wetmore." He said, "I do not have," he wanted to know how many we wanted, and I said, "Three." And he said, "I do not have an extra sign for 69 South." And I said, "We'll take what we can get." Blew me away. I don't know that I even had the authority. I was just asking, because I thought I'd start the conversation. Well, boom, next thing I know, he said, "We're going to have two signs." I hadn't been down.
It wasn't wrong with that.
It's there.
It was there Wednesday.
Nice, good. So I just, I thought, "Oh, my gosh, what a great job."
You know, the school has a billboard in there, put the thing on. They ought to have no open fires on it.
They've got that message on there, and have had, really, since we went into stage-two. They've done really well about that. So felt really good about the request, all it was, and then bam. And then, as I'm sure you guys are aware, our extension agent resigned as of last Friday, we could go today. Been in conversation with CSU, Bill Nobles, the Area Extension Director. We, they are looking to fill that on an interim basis. So I expect every day to get a phone call to say, "Hey, this is what we're looking at." He did call me, and I told him I would mention this to you gentlemen, that CSU has talked to at least two people about being an interim extension director. He also told, this was Bill Nobles, told me that CSU has agreed to pay their salary if we would pay the mileage. Normally, we pay 25% of the salary. They're going to pay 100% of the salary on an interim position if we will pay the mileage. I-
Where are they coming from?
Well, we don't know that for sure.
If they're coming from Utah, it might be a little scary.
But I told Bill Nobles that I would offer up my personal fifth-wheel RV for a person to live in, so that we're not paying that back and forth to Pueblo or here, wherever, I don't know. And I said, "You can throw that into the mix, get cut down on the travel time." So he threw out a name, asked me not to make that public yet, because they had not formalized anything. And I said, "That's fine, I won't say."
So what are we doing in the meantime for the fair? Are we going to try to get somebody?
Yeah, they're going to try to have somebody here by the 3rd of July. That's their target date, so 3rd of 50. So hopefully, we'll have that interim position in place to get us through the county fair and then on toward state fair, everything. So I feel pretty good about that. They also committed to try to have the position vacancy announcement up within three weeks of last week, so a couple more weeks, and then try to get us another extension agent on board by September. So Commissioner Prince has indicated an interest to be involved in that process, and I appreciate that. So, yes.
When Cindy Howard was the owner of the West Cliff Bend, she asked the town of West Cliff for permission to have the scripted sign. She agreed, and you could ask the new owners if they would put the fire ban on their mark.
Okay, good point. I'll make a note of that. I would think that they would probably agree to that. Thank you, sir. And then the Custer County Fair Board sent me a copy of their bylaws and asked for a signature on that, and it actually opened up a little bit of a conversation. I visited with counsel, legal counsel, about that. And my question was, should just anybody on the Board of County Commissioners be signing a set of bylaws? And he said he didn't believe so, that he thought that that needed to be something that would, should be brought to the commissioners. I have not forwarded you a copy of those. I will do that, and then I'll probably put those on the agenda for the next meeting, if that's okay. So I would ask if you get them, if you could review those, shoot any questions to me or straight to the President of the Fair Board, Diane Rose. We can get those hammered out, and then hopefully, we can vote on those, because I know they're wanting to get those in place. So I will forward you a copy of those, and then maybe next week, we can have an action on everyone else. Ms. Brenda, could you stick that on the agenda real quick? Custer County Fair Board bylaws approval?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. And then-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It sounded like the press conference setting that the commissioner's going to approve bylaws, which I think is certainly appropriate. Will we be going back to the bylaws of other organizations and somehow certify those or review those?
My understanding is no, only if they bring us a revised set, new or revised, because they've already been signed off on by other commissioners typically, at least the ones I'm aware of have been. So we continue to-
Yeah, it's probably the right thing.
To do our search of trying to bring to the surface all sets of bylaws that are connected to the county government. That is not necessarily an easy task, but Brenda and I are working on that, and I'm compiling those. So, yeah, I think that's the reasonable thing to do, and probably really, the legal thing to do. Some bylaws have commissioner signature lines on them, others don't. But I think with, when they come to review, we should say, "You know what, you need to include a," because if they're operating under the umbrella of the county government, then I believe it's appropriate-
It is.
-county commissioners to review those. So I'll just quickly go through the, my calendar. Again, some of this will be repetition from the, from you gentlemen, but June 21st, we had our audit report, budget review. The 25th, I attended a Health and Safety Response Team meeting here in the Commissioner's Room, the Central Front Range Training, Transportation Planning Region meeting that Mr. Candor mentioned. I attended that, the resolution hearing, public hearing on the zoning resolution amendments. Then on June 26th, I attended a Health and Safety Response Team site visit at a residence in Lake Dewise. Came by the courthouse the evening of the elections to see how our elections process was going, and I'm glad to report, everything went fine. We did not lose power as we did in our last election.
New machines work pretty good.
Or after our last election. It's really good. And then on the 26th of June, I grabbed the sheriff, and we went on a little road trip, and we went out, Commissioner Candor mentioned that, we went out to Rosita Road from Highway 96 around to the town of Rosita, and they are applying, they're done now, I think, applying that Dura blend, which we kind of think of as mag chloride. And so that was interesting to see that, and visited with him a little bit, and I think that's going to be a huge improvement. I'm anxious. I haven't been back yet, because I wanted to have it driven on for about a week, and then I'm going to go back out there.
And everybody has to keep in mind, that's just one code. They've got to build it up.
Yeah.
Takes some time.
I drive it every day, and it's moist.
When we came in today, we drove quite a bit over Rosita Road, that gravel part that was up there, and it's in the best shape that I can ever remember.
Good, and I'm glad to hear that. You know, as Commissioner Candor mentioned, I think we need to take heart in that we are addressing this. It's not these, I don't want to call them complaints, but these calls and concerns do not fall on deaf ears. Obviously, we're limited by funds, but I think that project, and I think Gary Hyde is planning on doing two or three miles of County Road 255. Rough budget on that's $30,000. That stuff is a little pricey, 89 cents a gallon for that Dura blend. So, you know, we have to eat an elephant one bite at a time, and I think we've gotten a pretty good start on that out here on Rosita Road. So I would encourage you-
And down on Oak Creek earlier.
Pardon?
On Oak Creek as well, earlier. It's part of that.
Oh, he's already done that. Okay. I thought he was doing it after Rosita Road. Yeah, it was just going to be a couple, two, three miles. Part of it's almost into that test mode thing, but I think it's going to make a big difference. We've got to be patient and let that process take its, take its natural course, so.
Which reminds me, you know, there are a lot of roads out there we don't maintain that people want us to maintain out of subdivisions. And, but there's rules on that. There has to be, they need to petition us to do that, and then we have to understand where they make the requirements for a county road, the crown and base and all that. And then it matters on whether we can. Sometimes we can't because of the funds. We can't do it. So, but be patient, and we keep building up better roads and giving us more opportunity, we can start taking on some of these if it's necessary.
Then I'll just finish up quickly. I also attended the Justice Center Committee meeting. We had a little retirement luncheon for Chuck Ipolito, our, I guess now former-
Chuck's gone.
Former IT Director Chuck Ipolito retired, so had a little send-off for him. We had a Tourism Board meeting on the 28th, and then I sat in yesterday on a Planning and Zoning Workshop. Counselor was visiting with that group about basically a code of conduct and kind of reviewing some things, and using the Riggins Rules, kind of, it's a guideline. So I thought that was good. So that's kind of what I've been up to. Appreciate your comments, sir, about the Rosita Road. Thank you for that. Anything else, gentlemen, and the Commissioner items?
No, I did have a good talk with Greg Smith, or earlier we did, and it was, thanks for taking the time.
Okay. Attorney Items?
You know, the short version, so I've done legal stuff.
We don't, we don't want the short version.
I like that. We can understand that, Clint.
The, we have the agenda item, but Shannon, our sheriff, wanted me to review the MOU with the school for the school resource officer, so I did that. Got another contract for disposal of property that's accumulated there that's essentially abandoned evidence and things that have been turned in over the years. And I reviewed that for him. I reviewed a proposed non-disclosure agreement that Vernon Roth asked me to take a look at concerning 911 Board. I attended the Justice Center Committee meeting the other day. I was also at that hazard meeting, Health and Safety Response Team meeting, and then I followed up on that with Jackie Hobbie a little bit, because there was a question of the property, the one you did the site visit on, and possible legal solutions, because that is such a mess there, and there may be a potential buyer for that. We talked about that a little bit, and, you know, what we might be able to do to get that property cleaned up with the property owners, our interest in doing it, somebody else may want to buy it and do it himself or herself. So, yesterday, I did speak to the Planning Commission at the request of Jackie Hobbie, our Planning and Zoning Director, who's also the Secretary for the Planning Commission. She tries to organize this every year, where the county attorney talks to the members of the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Adjustment, BZA, to just sort of review with them or remind them of certain ethical considerations, essentially a code of conduct, and particularly about the, our open meetings law, and how that affects the Planning Commission, and just reminding them that when a couple of them get together and start talking about business, that could be considered a business meeting, and should be done publicly. So I was just reminding them of those things. Then after that, I met with Cindy Howard for a little while. She wants me to draft a contract that she can use with the companies that she is going to work with for fire mitigation on private land. She has some money for that, and so I'm going to come up with a contract that should work for just about any situation. And then for the final item on our agenda today, I prepared a draft of a resolution which required me to go back and take a look at the subdivision plot that's been recorded again. again, do a little research. So I have some legal comments on that. It won't require an executive session, this will be an open session as far as where I think we're at with that. I guess that's, looks like everything I have on my list here.
Okay, thank you sir, appreciate that.
I understood that, Clint.
It didn't sound like you did anything that... I'm going to talk to you because you're an attorney, that Bill and I or Jackie couldn't have handled. You made it sound very legal.
No, I mean, it's so easy now, I wish I had gone to law school.
Oh my gosh, that's right. I was remiss while we're still on this Commissioner item thing, I wanted to mention a couple of things.
What's it called?
Cindy Howard, our Office of Emergency Manager, is down in Werfino County yesterday and I believe she's still down there today helping with that fire. If you're not aware, I'm sure you are, the Spring Fire, or as the federal fire people have named it, is Spring Creek Fire, and they of course lit up social media about what was the correct name, but Castillo County named it the Spring Fire and the feds named it the Spring Creek Fire, so obviously it's the same fire. But I wanted to throw this out, if you were interested in not privy to this information, there are several websites, I mean, there's probably dozens of them, but in the fire world in our area, we really work with several different websites that we go to for information. One of those is the INC Web, all one word. If you looked up INC, you'll come up with the International Nomenclature of Cosmetic Whatever, I've made that mistake. But if you add web on there, it takes you to that federal website. And so they do a good job of tracking those fires and putting out press releases on that, it's pretty, pretty good. And they're fairly current. I've gone to all the news websites and they're anywhere between six and 22 hours out, so I don't want to know what happened to a fire 22 hours ago, I want to know what happened to it in the last six or eight hours overnight or whatever, so. INCI is a good website. And then the Homeland Security has a website called Web E O C. And if you type that in, it takes you to the Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management link and they'll hook you up there with, I believe they have a drop-down menu and it's down at the bottom says Current Fires. You can click on that and look at fires all over the country. And then the, it's DFPC, it's really Colorado Department of Fire Prevention and Control, so that's another good website, is DFPC. So they, those three websites get you right to it. You don't have to dance around a bunch of monkey business trying to figure out who's trying to promote what. Those are good federal and state fire links, so I wanted to just throw that out to you. Administrative Assistant Items?
I have nothing today.
Okay, thank you. I do not have anything for unfinished business, gentlemen. Anything from your perspective on unfinished business?
No.
Mr. Prince?
No.
If not, we'll move on to new business. I would inform the public that as we prepare to vote on items under new business, we will allow public comment on each one of those items. Board of Commissioners firmly believes that the public has the right to share their opinions on things prior to us voting on them. After we vote on stuff, kind of a moot point then, so if I'm remiss and I do forget once in a while, I have two very capable Commissioners that will remind me that we need to...
Conscience, conscience.
Well...
Remind us.
Remind us, that's right, remind us. So with that, we'll move on. I would move that we approve the vouchers for June 2018, gentlemen. I'm assuming you had an opportunity to review those, so...
I'll second that if you made that a formal motion.
I did, thank you, yes. We moved and seconded to approve the vouchers for June 2018. Any discussion about that?
I have one item if you may. It's not very much money, but it's bugged me every time I see it on here and I go through this every time we get it. And it says prescriptions for the jail. And I'm wondering, is it the county's responsibility to buy medications for inmates? Are they charged back that? Or, I mean, if I have a, if I have cancer and I need $3,000 worth of prescriptions, should I...
Careful who you jail on.
Like a store or something? I mean, I don't know, it just bothers me a little bit that, that it's a perk that I'm concerned about. That's the only thing I'm bringing up, I'm just curious how that works.
I don't know, I would look at it, we feed them too, you've got to take care of a prisoner.
They charge them for that. They pay $3,000 a day.
Well, I don't know if we...
Yeah, we pay for it, they pay for it.
No, I understand, but maybe that's...
But the prescriptions, I don't know.
Maybe that's rolled into it, I don't know.
Yeah, I, as, exactly what you said, I've noticed it in the past, I noticed it again this month and I thought, well, if we incarcerate them, then I assume it's our responsibility to take care of that, but we can certainly look into that. Sheriff Barley will be here later on, if you happen to think of it.
I'll ask him.
Just ask him about that, he, I'm sure would know about that, but I saw that too.
I can address it very briefly, but it is clearly the Sheriff's responsibility, it's a county responsibility and that's why when you have somebody who gets very sick, they're in asking the judge to give him a personal recognizance bond to get him out of the jail just because it costs so much for a county to pay for medical care for people.
I was going to say, medical care including transport to a hospital, the county's on the hook for that.
Right, right.
So wouldn't that kind of encourage people who are real sick to go stop?
That's what he said. That's what he just said.
Okay, that was my comment.
Bad way to get it.
Yep. And I had a couple of things I just wanted to throw out. I think I've, well, I forgot to track down one of my questions. But I spoke with our Finance Officer, I see that we have paid one of the deputies to go on a coroner call-out and I thought, well, hmm, I wonder why that's not a standard duty of a deputy unless they weren't on duty. So I spoke with Donna Hobby and that's exactly the situation, that they had to call in a deputy that was off-duty and so they paid him for that. It happened twice this month for two coroner call-outs, so that, that was the deal with that. And then I wanted to go talk with Department of Human Services about a line item for rent, but I'm wondering if they just didn't...
That's a pass-through.
A pass-through, that they didn't pay that and we're passing that money through, but I did not track that down and I apologize for that. That's the only two questions I had, so I think I'm satisfied with that. Any other discussion, public comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the vouchers for June 2018, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. I'll start with you, Commissioner Prince, if you'd like to initial those, we can send those down the way. Next on the agenda, and I would ask for your tolerance because we would like to sign, we need to sign these documents, but we can do that and move on, or if you prefer, we can wait before we move on to the proposed Tourism Workshop. I don't want to appear to be distracted, so I would defer to, I'm assuming you're here, Mr. Smith, to deal with that, or no? The proposed workshop.
Tourism Board is not proposing workshop.
Okay, all right.
The Steering Committee for the Branding Grant is.
Okay, so can we hold on just a second then? Let's finish this, if you don't mind. I guess I'm stalling you just for a second.
That doesn't take long to sign.
Because there's, I don't know how many checks, probably 800 checks that are waiting to get printed today based on our initials, so I'd like to get this done real quick and then... One of the things that Legal Counsel mentioned yesterday in the Planning and Zoning Workshop was behavior and conduct of members and one of the things I appreciated about that he said was, when people come to speak to any group, including the county Commissioners, which is what I was thinking about, that it's incumbent upon us to give them our full attention, to listen to what they have to say, to really hear what the person was having to say. And that made me think about something just like this. I don't think it's fair for us to sit here and be doing other stuff while somebody from the audience or whatever is trying to communicate to us. So it takes a few minutes, but I think it's better and certainly I think more respectful to handle it that way. So, okay, sir, let's, so let's have that conversation. Tourism Board, you as a group have decided not to propose a workshop?
The Tourism Board is not the organization or the group of people that has been steering the branding.
Okay.
The Branding Grant that we have was submitted by CART, Tourism Board, Economic Development, and the Chamber of Commerce. And we have representatives of all four groups who've been overseeing this process with Contractor and OED, the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. I can tell you, we have a date that I think would be convenient for y'all and that would be the 31st of July. If we could simply be on the agenda of the meeting, you wouldn't have to schedule another one.
So what are you going to call it then, Greg? It's not a tourism?
It's just a brand new...
You want to rename this thing?
It's a presentation of the proposed branding for Custer County.
Okay. Originally, we talked about July 10th, is that correct?
We did, and OED cannot support that.
So we will go away?
And that was going to be a special meeting at that point. And so what I did was look at the calendar, we had discussion among us on the 31st, looked to be can, or possible for everybody involved that we knew of.
Afternoon meeting, evening meeting?
Well, you have a meeting on the...
Yeah, it's during, you want to do it during the Board of Directors or County Commissioners meeting?
I think that would be fine, although I think it would be more convenient for the people from Denver. We had it say at 1:00, it'll be scheduled at 1:00.
Okay.
Greg, for the sake of the audience and...
We stand or come?
No, sit down, it's okay. I mean, you're welcome to come, I don't mean to sound like you're sitting down.
Stay there!
Would you tell us what branding is and what this meeting is in reference to, just in case anybody doesn't understand what branding is?
About a year ago, we submitted a proposal for a Blueprint 2.0 Grant from OED. It is funded only in assistance, there is no money involved. And the idea is to brand the county, look at our assets and how those might appeal to others. Particularly, we took a two-track approach for both tourism and for economic development. And that's why the parties involved are interested, they also have supported this grant. During the month of March, I believe it was late March, we circulated a survey to people of the county. It was voluntary compliance, it was, you know, they had to go online, spend about five, 10 minutes filling out our impressions within the county of who we are. And Contractor, DCI, which I believe has also worked with CART and the Town of West Cliff before, they compiled these survey results and they issued a report. That report then led to supposal of taglines and they've settled on a tag, everybody involved has settled on a tagline at this point that we would announce on that day. What is in process right now is the design of logos. We'll receive several alternative logos, we will give them feedback from the Steering Committee, and then we will present what has come up with this. Now, why isn't this done by a vote of everybody in the county? I think that's what a lot of people would ask. And the idea, quite frankly, is based on experience. A brand is not necessarily, not necessarily what people think of themselves, it is how the world sees them. And certainly we want to mold how the world sees us, but it has to be a combination of these things. A brand is not merely a logo, it is not merely a tagline, it's a matter of the language we use in general, it's a matter of creating impressions. And of course, branding is kind of everything, today's advertising overwhelming world. And what we are attempting to do is to draw people here who will spend money on tourism, who will invest in our community and not merely treat us as a venue for doing things, but as a place, a genuine place.
Thank you very much. Much more than I was hoping, but very comprehensive and I appreciate it.
So, yes, but...
Just as a suggestion to create a, this group of four organizations has had an informal, what we call Round Table, that is a matter of coordination for about a year and a half. And we, it started out with Tourism Board's effort towards the revised website and an opportunity came through Economic Development for branding support through, at that time, basically Economic Development said, hey, our logo is loaded, you know, this is something that's appropriate for us to do as far as a continuation of the local efforts. And we suggested if Tourism Board would take the lead on it, that, you know, we would certainly cooperate and support it. So that's how the Tourism Board, but basically it's a product of about a year and a half of collaboration between the four groups.
Let me, let me stop here just for a second. I've been given a note by our IT Director who has requested that anybody in the county building that is live streaming our BOCC meeting, which we do live stream this to the community, that we stop that live streaming just within the county building because that is killing our bandwidth and we cannot get this live streamed out, yeah. So if you are, I'm speaking to the people in the county building, if you're live streaming, with all due respect, we would ask you to leave that site so that we can get our bandwidth up. I think IT is working on this, so I would appreciate that, thank you. So let's continue then. Mr. Smith, you're obviously thinking July 31st, would your first choice to be, have this presentation during the meeting or before or after the meeting? Of course, the meeting starts at 9:00, your people are coming from out of town, so I'll assume it would be either after or during the meeting.
We are in the tourism business and I imagine we can find them a place to stay.
You ought to make them come up and stay.
But I can defer to you, I think this should suit your time. And we can have it on another day if you'd like to schedule a workshop, but I've looked at the August calendar and it looks difficult.
My initial feeling is during the meeting, but go ahead, sir.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. I was going to say, can I suggest we put it at the end of the agenda during the meeting? Because that's when our folks will be here, people who are live streaming will be able to see it. They don't have to tune back in after we break and come back at 1:00. My suggestion would be to do it as, towards the end of the agenda, but as an agenda item.
Mr. Camden, your feelings?
So you would, you wouldn't break and then close the meeting, which might be more appropriate?
No, I think we just do it during the meeting for that very reason.
Well, during, during the meeting.
We could take a break maybe right before, that depends on the agenda.
Only just because it was called a workshop originally, if it's not, it's something that we could comment on and then we would be making some rules.
Well...
Do you want to do that or not?
Yeah, I, there was reference made to a workshop thinking it was going to be outside of the meeting. I don't think it was a desire.
I don't think it was a desire to have anything that we're going to vote on, so... You've got to be careful, that's why I say we should close it and it is only that we're here at the same time on proposal.
With general consent, then I would ask that July 31st meeting, towards the end of the agenda, would you be okay with that? Commissioner Prince?
Oh, that's great.
You're a candidate, so... Ms. Brenda, could you do that for us, please? I would guess a presentation from...
It should be from Jennifer Merchant or David Marstead, I believe, of OED.
Of OED, I didn't know if it was OED or if it was a company named different.
It's definitely OED.
Okay, so Office of Economic Development and International Trade, presentation on countywide branding.
What was the fourth one? That's three we've got. What's the fourth entity? OED?
Oh, Chamber.
Oh, the Chamber.
Yeah.
So they'll be here.
The Office, OED, OED, federal or state?
State.
Okay, so we're working with the state.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And this is designed to align, OED and CTO are essentially in the same department, the Colorado Tourism Office, and so it's aligning with what they do.
Okay, good.
What was the last part of that Office of Economic Development?
The International Trade.
O E D I T.
The other thing, if it was, is okay with y'all? The other thing, if it was, is okay with y'all, we think we should invite other organizations in town, from the Art Guild to the two towns and people who will be affected by this. That might call for a little bit bigger room than this.
I'm making eye contact because she knows exactly what I'm, she knows what I'm thinking. She will go see where we're at with the court. We could move that into the court. Yes, ma'am?
Because of, you know, having the other entities, would you want to make it then be a workshop instead? It's our, it's a presentation is what we need.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That was my point. You know, it's either part of the formal meeting that we can do things against or for, or it's an information, let everybody know what's going on before something happens.
And it seems like you'd want to know kind of what's going on before you can even do anything to vote or whatever, so it just seems like a workshop.
And that brings me to this whole point. I'm assuming that there's no voting involved here. That's up to you all.
Well, you're not asking for anything, huh?
We are not asking for anything. I think it would be great if the county endorsed the brand, if you so approve it, but the key to this brand is whether it will be accepted. A brand does not work if it does not work for the county.
My initial feeling is to leave it as part of the meeting. If we need to move in there, we can, we can livestream from in there as well. So, she's checking on the calendar for the court docket right now. And I get what you're saying, thank you. I just, yeah, I just believe it'd be probably more appropriate to be in a, in a meeting. So we will, we will see what Ms. Brendan finds out. You will reach out to those organizations that you were thinking of and invite them?
Unless you prefer to, but just.
No, no. No, I'm good. I guess my other thought was, and you and I have kind of had a conversation about this a little bit, about public input or public, should we invite the general public to come and see that presentation as well, is what I'm asking.
You are in effect when you put it on the agenda, right?
Courtroom is available.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I penciled it in.
Yes.
I think it would be a benefit to the general, general public. I think the decisions have largely been made, there can be minor adjustments within this grant, there can always be adjustments. But, yeah, I think it'd be a wonderful thing for the public to see. They, from the very beginning, in presenting the responses, we've seen this in several versions now, presenting the responses to the survey, they have a rather robust PowerPoint presentation that will explain what they heard, how they reacted to it, and what the decisions have been.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. We will move on then to the Tourism Board member appointments. We have a opening on the Tourism Board, I think that's fair to say, with the resignation of one of the members. We have been provided with, and I'm trying to bring that documentation up, with the Tourism Board's recommendation for the replacement. So what is the group's pleasure? Go ahead, sir.
I have some things that I'd like to talk about with the Tourism Board. And one of the things that I'm gonna recommend in a moment is that we postpone this appointment till a later date. The Tourism Board, and I believe you may feel, I don't know how you feel, you've been to the meetings, you've seen what happens, it's very contentious, is difficult. I have made the comment, within the first 10 minutes of the last one, that this is the hardest board I've ever sat on. And I'm gonna recommend a couple of changes to this board that I think may help the cohesiveness and the attraction of this board. My recommendations are going to be, and I'm gonna put it in the form of a motion, which you may or may not accept. Mr. Brent Brusser, who is a member of the Board, unfortunately is not here, I hope you're watching. He has a, a family member who's not well, mentioned to me a while back that he really wants off the Board. And I'm gonna make the recommendation that we accept his resignation immediately.
In this meeting or in the?
I'm gonna ask you to vote on it in just a moment.
That's what I'm.
I have a real problem with all commissioners who are voting members on any board. I think that's a conflict to me, and I would like to recommend, and I'll do it in the form of a motion also, that I, who am now, as of this moment, a voting member on that group, be made an ex officio member and have my position replaced by a voting member from CART, since they are so closely aligned with that. This has nothing to do with the vacancies that we have at the moment. The last thing that bothers me, and I'm gonna make a motion to subvert to, I have gone out and I've searched as many of the boards as I can find at committees, nobody gets paid to be volunteer on a committee. So I would like to also recommend, and I'll make it in the form of a motion also, that Board volunteers are not paid. Now, consultants are different. If someone is a consultant, I'm fine, but I don't think they should be a Board member at the same time. So that being said, and I'm hoping this will bring cohesiveness back to the group, I move that we accept Brent Brusser's resignation effective immediately.
Okay, I will second that. Been moved and seconded to accept Brent Brusser's resignation as a discussion. I do have some discussion. I think, I'm glad you didn't say letter of resignation, because I don't believe we have that. I'm not sure we have a resignation. I know he has indicated to you personally of his intent, so I am going to rule your motion out of order, sir, because I don't believe we have a resignation to act on. With all due respect, and I seconded your motion so that we could have this debate and be legal about that. I would allow you the opportunity to withdraw your motion after I offer a suggestion, and that would be that we remove him from that Board because we do not have a letter of resignation. Certainly open for discussion, that's what I want to talk about.
Or wait until he sends in a letter and.
My guess. I understand your point of order on.
Thank you.
A resignation of letter, and I appreciate what you're saying, and there's certainly validity to that. And he has not sent in a letter of resignation.
Correct.
He mentioned to me that he would like to be off the Board.
And without interrupting, that's why I think it would be more appropriate then for us to.
I'll get to it.
Okay.
I'm trying to explain.
Didn't fall on deaf ears, okay.
How I'm making this transition, basically for the audience, because I think your point is very well taken. If there is not a formal resignation, you can't accept it. And I really didn't think of that at the time, but I would like to make it, I will change my motion to say that we remove Brent Brusser from the Tourism Board effective immediately. And I'll stop right there, but I do want it to be known that this is not any punishment, harm, this is not for malfeasance, this is not for anything other than his recommendation to me, his suggestion to me that he wants off, and my agreement that I think this will help the Tourism Board be a more cohesive group. So I thank you for what you've said. I'd like to revise my motion to say that we remove Brent Brusser from the Tourism Board effective.
I'll second.
And as a point of order, I would probably request you withdraw your motion.
Absolutely, absolutely. I meant it, and I think that implies that, but that's fine.
So it's been moved and, let me back up, because we need to be technically correct here. So the Chair would accept your withdrawal of your motion, I seconded the motion, it's not absolutely necessary, but I will also withdraw my second, and the Chair would recognize your motion to.
Remove.
Remove Brent Brusser from the Tourism Board effective immediately. And you seconded said motion. So it's been moved and seconded to remove Brent Brusser from the Tourism Board effective immediately, is there a further discussion? I agree, as you indicated, I've sat in those meetings and probably, you know, just, I think Brent would concur that it's just not a good situation. It's, I think we need to move forward in a positive manner and to try to get a good cohesive Board that can work together and drive towards the same goal. So that's where I shake out. And before we vote, public comment.
I think you're making a mistake.
Okay.
Mr. Brusser's term expires at the end of the year. He's been extremely important to the work of the committee. I think you're making a mistake.
All right, sir.
I've asked him to stay as long as he can. My resignation will follow his removal, effective July 31st.
Other comments? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion of removing Brent Brusser effective immediately, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
I move that, and this is not just for the Tourism Board, any Board or Committee of Volunteers be not paid. I think that should be the policy of the Board of County Commissioners, effective immediately on that also.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's discuss it.
Well, we will, sir. It's been moved and seconded to, and probably, I don't know, Counselor, if this needs to be a resolution or not, but I'll restate the motion and we can talk about that during discussion. Been moved and seconded that the Board of County Commissioners direct all Volunteer Board Members and their Boards that no member is to be paid for services rendered while they're serving on the Board. Is that fair, Commissioner Prince?
I think that would be a resolution.
Is there a debate, discussion?
Just a question. Do we have a problem? Are we paying somebody? Because if we are, I think we ought to deal with that first, because that's an issue.
Well, I think we're dealing with it right now.
Well, but how do we fix? I want to understand, I want to understand who we're paying and why. This surprises me.
I would.
I've always assumed, and maybe that's the problem, it does make a problem with me and you guys, they say.
Here's what I'd recommend. I would recommend that be done in an executive session if counsel concurs with me. There is at least one person I know who is paid and is also a Volunteer Board person. I feel it's inappropriate, and I want to set a policy. I'll be happy in an executive session to discuss how that works. Now, the way I, way I said this also is, paid consultants are fine.
Sure, I understand, you can hire people for a recommendation.
Correct. I just don't feel a Board member should.
Right, because they're not voting for themselves, that's the problem. And that, to me.
It's an inherent conflict of interest.
Right. And I had always assumed that's the case, but that is also a reason why a County Commissioner should not be on the Board here as a county manager. You brought that, so that's gonna be a separate.
That's my.
I've always had that issue.
I'm gonna make that just a second.
Should not be voting in her own.
I'm gonna make that motion in just a second also.
Counselor, you want to weigh in on Commissioner Prince's comments about?
It's not an executive session issue, it's not a personnel issue, and it's not a legal issue that requires legal advice. I don't think we can discuss it in an executive session.
All right. If you want to sue, sir, we can certainly do that.
So have you guys had one issue?
That I'm aware of.
Law for a long time, it's been, not a long time, it's recent, and I've had a problem.
Ongoing practice, though.
Yeah, and it, it's just not appropriate. And what I'm really concerned about, more than just this one person, because the one person I'm talking about is by far the most talented person in this particular committee, who lends this person's expertise, who is, hang on a second here, I hear, who is giving up their revenue that they could be earning when they volunteer. I fully understand all that, and I, the value of this person far exceeds what the cost is. The concept is what bothers me. And what bothers me is in other, someone else is gonna come in, in a different Board and say, you know what, my talents are so well needed, and I'm not saying that this person is not, my talents are so well needed that I need to be paid to be on the Board. And that is where I, I have the problem.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was gonna say, my concern, and I went down through the vouchers to, and I've thought this for a couple of months, is not that, it doesn't have anything to do with the person necessarily, it's the, it's the concept, it's the procedure that.
Well, it's flat out illegal, and I believe, I believe in the state statutes, I mean, that's what our job is. We, you, that is the case in government at all levels that I'm aware of. You cannot have a volunteer, if it's a voluntary action, be paid, period. That's, that goes without saying. And maybe, if we're gonna write a resolution, this is what my conflict, I don't want to be in conflict with something we're already supposed to be doing.
I appreciate what you're saying.
And write the language correctly. It's just that we acknowledge, maybe it's a statute, that we should be making sure that all our departments, because we don't have cognizant of everything Kelly's doing in there, I mean, sometimes things happen, and say, yeah, let's go do it. But we need to discuss it, and they all need to be aware of what the state requirements are first. So before we write a resolution, I think we ought to see how we dovetail with what exists in state statutes.
I don't know that there's anything that exists, but.
Well, conflict of interest does, I know that.
And it may not even be a conflict of interest, other than the fact.
It really isn't, because I will tell you, the person I'm, I'm thinking about is the consummate.
No, I, I misspoke, Jay, I don't, I didn't mean it, say.
Professional is the word I want to get out.
Well, there, I'm sorry. There is an issue with, if I had, I live on any Board or in a function, and I wanted to take my own expertise, volunteer to do it, that is not a, something that is allowed without competing, going out for public bid for certain things, I don't care what the service is, could, anything.
I concur with you.
That's in the state.
The one instance I know of that, incident that I know that, this person refuses himself every time, has stated over and over, there may be a conflict of interest, I'm backing out, this person is the consummate professional.
Right, I, I.
But hang on a second. The reason I want to put this into a resolution and make it a policy is because not for this person, for the one behind him or her.
Sure.
Here's what I, I want a policy.
Okay, well, let's see if there's a policy that exists that we should have been flagging in the first place and having everybody.
I have no issue with that.
That's, that's my issue, because I truly believe, and I've been in government almost all my life, and I, and I've seen it at all levels. And I did go back through the statutes on a couple of things that we recently had, and they are, well, pretty well written out, it's just hard, you know, people just, they go on state statute, and it's hard to cipher through, and we need guys like Clint and others to help, so.
Would you be okay if I asked Counselor if he would take a look at it and write the resolution, including the.
Or even refer to the state statute?
If I say, if it's included in the state statutes, there is, if not, it'll just be our policy.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, what, did we vote?
No, no, we're still in discussion. Yeah, my take is that, again, I concur exactly what you said, it's not necessarily this particular situation, it may, this situation made us aware of it, I do not believe anybody sitting on a County Board should be paid for their services. If they want to get paid, then probably should be a consultant. It opens us up for that possible conflict of interest. I've served on Boards through my 27-year teaching career, I guarantee you, I was on two of those Boards the entire time, would never have thought about getting paid for what I did, it was a voluntary position, certainly brought my expertise to it, but, and so that girds up my belief that we just don't have any business of paying people that serve on a Board.
I think it's great to make that.
So, Counselor, you want to weigh in, respond?
No, not at this point.
You'd be willing to do some research?
Sure.
Okay. And I know we've got some comments, and I will get to those, I want to make sure we're going through our protocol here, so, yeah, if you would look to see if there are existing rules, statutes, whatever, guidelines, and then if finding, depending on your finding, then could you also write a resolution to address what we're talking about? Comfortable with that?
Yep.
Prince? So before we vote, public comment. In the back, please.
I appreciate Mr. Prince's position, and I, I respect that. I question whether or not there should be a legal means, and maybe Clint can address that, for it to be allowed, even if. that, for it to be allowed, even if the member has to resign from the board without being able to be reappointed. But if somebody's an engineer or wants to bid on a job, that they have the opportunity to resign the board to then participate in-
Then there wouldn't be a conflict of interest.
Correct.
Yeah, good point.
On the Tourism Board, you know, we, one of the big things is conflict of interest. And I will say, last year I wasn't on board, but I am now, that due diligence was made in regards to anything with conflict of interest. It was stated, um, there was a process out there and it was stated that that person was not getting paid the full, he, that person would be paid up to an X amount. Um, so it, it wasn't done with blinders on behalf of the Tourism Board, it was done very respectfully and that, um, conflict of interest was something that we talked very deeply about and it was acknowledged, you can go back through the minutes and you can see that. So, there was, um, documentation that it would be up to a certain amount and that would be it. Um, and if, far less than what, if they were consulting that, the Tourism Board would be paid. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we did go along with what the bylaws stated and really what the state states as well, and it was stated, and, um, that person didn't sign.
Okay. You have a comment?
I would consider, you're talking about reimbursement or payment, I would consider that if you're generating a policy, that you consider your number of the county assigned boards require a, a degree of travel, uh, to anticipate.
That is, that is different.
Okay, yeah.
That's true.
Counselor, you?
Yeah, I, I-
What's that, that is to include language about-
I feel that differently.
Travel expense?
That is, like for the planning commission, for instance, that's set forth in their, their law, compensated for travel expenses.
Yes, good point, thank you. Other comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote on the motion that, uh, is to pursue writing a resolution prohibiting any volunteer serving on a board under the county government's umbrella to not receive payment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries.
I would like to move that, um, and I am guilty of this and this is what came to light also, and I said this is not right either, and while we're cleaning the plate, I just thought I'd throw this one out too. I feel it is inappropriate for any commissioner to be a voting member on any board or commission. The only place they should vote is sitting at these three tables right here, and therefore-
These three chairs at a table, Jay.
You get it. I want to roll in here. Okay, so my, I would, I would like to establish the policy by resolution that no commissioner shall be a voting member on any board or commission, and if there are any now, of which I am two and I will resign immediately, um, if they choose to be, other than just an overseer, they could be an ex officio member if that's, if the board chooses them, but non-voting member. In light of that, specifically in this motion also, I'd like to say, because I am a voting member of the Tourism Board, I think Card is an integral part of the Tourism Board, and I would like to give up, they are an ex officio member at this point, I would like to give up my, uh, voting membership immediately and, um, put Card in as a voting member and, uh, we'll have a second and I'm sure you-
Uh, and that's part of your motion, Card?
Yes, yes.
I'll second the motion.
For them, let us, let us talk here.
Let me, uh, I want to make sure I state your motion correctly.
It could be two different motions.
Yeah, your motion is to, I would ask that we separate those motions, divide the question.
I retract, I retract the motion previously.
Or you can just, you can request to divide the motion.
Okay. I'd like to divide the motion. The first motion is that we establish the policy via resolution that Board of County Commissioners, and I'd almost like to say any elected official, but I don't know if we have any right to do that, be a voting member on any committee or board within the county.
Okay, under the county's purview.
Right.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of County Commissioners establish a policy by resolution, uh, to dictate that no sitting commissioner shall be a voting member of any board or commission under the county's purview.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Okay, uh, so that would probably affect bylaws, right? So, we're gonna have to include probably updating current bylaws, because you don't want that in the bylaw that the county commissioners will vote.
I agree.
But in this case, I believe, top-down, if this passes, then we can-
If this is approved, if it's approved, and someone asks us to be a voting member, we'd say, does the resolution sets commissioners may not be a voting member?
Right.
And then I would think we would go back to boards and commissions and say, check your bylaws if you need to revise them to fall under the resolution of the commissioners. If it's, if approved, then they would need to do that.
Which will give us a wonderful opportunity to look at all the bylaws.
Sure, that's a good reason to clean them up.
Which is something we agreed earlier that we need to review.
Okay. Another question that might require another thing. You mentioned the other departments. I don't know if, if the other departments have committees or they, do you, do you know?
I don't.
You don't. Shannon probably doesn't. I'm just, I think it's-
I think we have a right to-
No, but what we do have a right to, because we do, are accountable for the county to adhere to the laws of the state. And, uh, and we're responsible for the budgets for those different departments to spend the money. I think we have an interest in not demanding, I, I disagree with that always, because these are equal positions, is, it's a good thing to, to, if we're cleaning up, clean up. And, uh, and so I don't know how to handle it, I'm not supposed to, wanting to be part of this, I'm just saying-
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the sheriff being a separate elected official, and I'm just picking on the sheriff.
So is J.D. Henry.
Any elected official. I don't believe we have the right to dictate whether they can or cannot be on the board. The ones under our purview, we can, so J.D.-
That's, I have no problem with that, I just-
And, and the motion is pertaining to the county-
It's just the county commissioners.
Just in the county with the rest of the county.
The discussion was only because now you're gonna have another, we're gonna look at bylaws and then we're gonna have another one that could be our, what we do to, to help our team all pull together with the same kind of ethical conduct, right?
It's not inappropriate. Okay. How good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe I have any pertinent, uh, comments and discussion about this myself, I agree with what you're saying, uh, I just want to make sure that what I say is what you said. Uh, did you include your resignation in this motion, or is that going to be a separate thing?
How about, Sheriff, I res, uh, yes, I resign immediately as a voting member of the Tourism Board.
Okay, all right. We can, we can vote on that separately if you're okay with that. I think we need to deal with this motion because it has to do with the resolution.
I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, public comment? Yes, sir?
I would ask you to consider whether or not, as in the Vice President, if there's a tie, whether or not an ex officio should be a tiebreaker.
Okay, of a board or, or a commission? Okay. Uh, I know of, of the bylaws that I have read, uh, ex officio members don't vote regardless. Okay. Uh, according to parliamentary law, that is not always the case, but these boards and commissions have basically agreed to adopt portions of parliamentary law that they feel are appropriate, so if their bylaws say ex officio members are not allowed to vote, that's gonna override parliamentary law.
I think I've also read where if you have to tie, that it's automatic.
Yeah, we can address that, hold on just a second.
Public comment, if I may, please. And I know Mr. Smith has something to say, but if you don't mind, one moment, please. What really concerns me is, as a commissioner, if I vote on a board, or any of us do, and then it comes to the commissioners for a vote for approval or anything else, this is a tremendous conflict of interest. It hasn't occurred yet, but it will occur later and I want to clean it up before it-
Well, that's your point, is you're gonna be an ex officio maybe, uh, and you can't be a commissioner and then say, okay, nobody, I got a tie, a break of tie, you can't do that.
I don't want any vote whatsoever.
Yeah. Yeah, and it really then kind of is counterproductive to the Board of County Commissioners when one of us would regularly recuse ourselves because we served on a board.
Disservice to your district.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing our job. Yes, sir, sorry.
Um, I second Mr. Candor's concern about the bylaws. I think you're gonna find that's a pretty big job. The bylaws for the Tourism Board are, and, um, any other information we have is imaged, it's not typed. So somebody will have to retype all of those.
Zoning that a problem with that.
I was gonna actually ask that that be done, because I think there's some things to be changed.
Okay.
Um, as far as, um, the tiebreaking vote, as, as a board chairman, uh, the short time I've done it, that's how I treat my position. Um, I want to see the other members of the board state their positions and if there is a tie, then I would, I would assert mine. So I, I, I think, I, I think it's a good idea. Might I address the second part now?
Certainly.
That's not, that's not on the table?
Uh, no, let's hold off.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you asking about that. Yes, ma'am?
I do believe that there is a set of type-written bylaws, um, out there, that, that, I mean, it doesn't-
I'm not sure that type-written, they're scanned, it's not included yet.
No, from the very beginning.
Okay.
So, um, if, if it's okay, I'll do what I can and there are triple days to track that down. So it just helps with time to redo the whole thing.
Yeah, I didn't mean to be argumentative, I, I wanted to say I have a hard copy, certainly. Some of it was typed, some of it was, uh, scanned in, so I'm just checking to see the date on that, uh, since we're, yeah, 2012, so, um, yeah, and I, we've had this discussion with several groups and organizations about how often their bylaws should be vetted, I personally have my feelings about that, at some point commissioners may choose to, to look into that, um, but I don't believe it would be an encumbrance upon any board or commission for us to request them to revise their bylaws to include, uh, this directive if the motion passes. So, other comments? Did I see somebody else saying? Go ahead.
I guess one other comment, regards to state statutes. I can't remember way back when we did through the bylaws, how closely we were with the state if the commissioners was one of those things that needed to be on there, as far as a member which could be ex officio. So just to add by that.
Thank you. Okay. Other, public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote on the motion which, uh, is to establish a policy that county commissioners will not serve as a voting member on any board or commission under the purview of the county. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Uh, we will take your advice, we'll look and see, um, about Colorado revised statutes. I would guess, if it said anything, it would say may serve on board, but I just can't imagine a statute saying a commissioner shall serve on a board, but we'll look into that as well. Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, okay, Commissioner Prince, about to wear you out, aren't we?
No, it's okay.
Oh, he's wearing us.
I came in with fire in my eyes, just trying to clean up some items that have bothered me, most of them being, um, ethical issues that I'm concerned about. There hasn't been a major issue. What I'm trying to do is just stall an issue from coming up, that's all I'm really trying to do. Okay. Have I resigned from this board?
No.
Okay.
We have heard your verbal resignation and I'm prepared to deal with that.
Um, I said, I am a voting member on two different boards and I, at this time, would like to, effective immediately, resign from, as a voting member of the Tourism Board, and I'd like to resign as a voting member of the, um, attainable housing board, also known as the affordable housing board. Um, I would like to, uh, stay as the contact from the commission on those boards, and if they choose to put me in some kind of ex officio thing, that's fine, if not, I'm happy just to sit there and lend support. So I would like to resign from those two boards, those are the only two that I'm a voting member on.
Chair would accept that resignation and call for a vote. Uh, it's really not a debatable item, but our policies are that before we vote, we would ask for public comment and I will stand for that now. Yes, sir?
I just want to make sure I understand, he's resigning as a voting member but still gonna be on the board just on who?
It's a great question.
Uh, no, no, sir, and I appreciate the question. The way it operates is the commissioners are assigned or request to be assigned or visit the different boards as they have their meetings. It's not, we have them listed officially, but between the three of us, as Commissioner, uh, excuse me, as Chairman, Flower has said many times, we're all one-third commissioners, so we overlap often. I'll sit on our airport board even though, given though, um, Commissioner Candor is the chair of, not the chair, is the contact for that, to the board. So we just, we're the contact, we go and sit in to make sure that we have a pulse on what's going on. If there are questions they may ask, do you think the board might approve this? And the answer almost always is, you know, it's a great question, I can't speak for them, let's bring it up and see what they say. So, no, I, I, I'm resigning from a voting member of the board, I will not be on the board at all, but I still could go to the meetings and be a contact for the commissioners. Does that, does that answer your question?
It's not a requirement to go to meetings, it's a requirement to listen to questions.
So it would be fair to say you're resigning from that board, period?
Correct.
From, from those two boards?
Correct.
Okay. The fact that you're a voting member is wrapped into that.
Agreed.
Got it. Yeah, thank you, sir. Comment?
So then that does affect our bylaws?
That's, it always did.
And there's probably other bylaws that have that in there too. And it just seems inappropriate to me, I'm, I'm just rehashing and I don't need to do the, if there was a judge in front of me, he'd be screaming at me right now, you've already made that point, Counselor, move on. But, what I'm trying to say is, what I'm trying to say is, that the inherent conflict of interest as a voting member for an issue, and many of the issues do come before the board, and then sitting here as a commissioner also is an inherent conflict of interest, and that's what I'm trying to change.
And then what I would like to say is, is there a way to reword that, that you are pertinent to our bylaws, a member of the board, but as a non-voting member?
Not necessary.
And that would be an ex officio in my mind, and that's why I used that term earlier, I would resign as a voting member and if the board chose, I would be willing to be an ex officio member, which means that I have rights to discussion, I can be involved in all of it, but when the vote comes, I sit there with my hands like this.
From a county point of view, we are each sharing obligations to be contacts and, and leads for certain, um, functions, and that, he will remain as a lead for that function.
Well, I think we're still, that's around initial, I want to defer this to, uh, Attorney Smith, yet, you have anything to weigh in, sir? Because I guess my question is this, if, if Commissioner Prince resigns as a voting member, that doesn't necessarily mean he's resigning as a member of a board, as I understand it.
That's really kind of the way I set the motion.
So that's, I think, where you're headed, that we need to determine, number one, the intent of your motion, sir, and secondly, where we want to go as a Board of County Commissioners on this. Any suggestions or comments about that?
Well, we can make that the policy, that a commissioner can be an non-voting member of a board. Um, I mean, if that's how you want to do it, and it will require changing the bylaws of the number of these boards.
Um, I attend a lot of meetings, I'm not on their board, I'm certainly not a voting member. I go as a county commissioner to represent our Board of County Commissioners, and sometimes I'm allowed to speak, sometimes I'm not, but I'm certainly not a member, and that doesn't happen very often. I think you probably mentioned the only two times that a commissioner is a member of a board, uh, so, I don't know, I certainly do not want the idea that somebody's gonna have to rewrite bylaws to preclude us from making a decision, it has nothing to do with it. Anybody can write bylaws, and typically, in this county, most of these, uh, bylaws can be amended by a majority of the vote, which is kind of insane when it comes to parliamentary law, that's not normal, but that's the way it's written in a bunch of these bylaws, so, uh, I don't, I'm not gonna use rewriting bylaws as a weighing issue on whether or not I vote for or against this. That's, to me, that's just pay-per-worth.
You know, all of these boards are public boards. They are open to the public.
Yes, they are.
The public can come in and attend these meetings, and should, as the public, have input, maybe not voting input, obviously.
Sure, comments.
And, I mean, I could go to an airport board meeting and say what I think as a member of the public, and I don't see a real reason to have you guys actually on the board. You can speak, you can share your, they can ask, you can say. It takes up a board position that might be held by a citizen.
And maybe splitting hairs, would you actually have been paid while you were sitting on that board?
Yeah, it is actually.
I hope so. No. So there's that whole thing too, you know? So now we're, you have a board member that's voting that's paid?
For the record.
Yes, sir.
I have never received a penny, and this is for the record. I've never received a penny, not reimbursement for travel, not for lunches, not for anything on any board that I have ever sat on in this county. That's the record.
And I want to also make this clarification, that we do sit on other boards of directors. Commissioner Candace sits on a board of directors, but it is not under the county purview. And I think that is very appropriate, that we sit on those boards to get that representation to bring back to Custer County.
No problem. That's not included.
So that is not, that's not under this whole...
It's boards, and we're responsible.
Jackie brings up a really good point, and this ex officio, non-voting member, you know, she's right. You know, I don't think we should be a member of the board, period. Because she's right. We have the right to say what we want. If the chair of that board says shut up and sit down, we shut up and sit down, just like you have told people here in a nice way. He's never been rude to shut up and sit down. Jackie's right. So if I can, as this discussion is moving forward, I'd like to amend my motion again. I'm trying to get the concepts done, but let's get the minutia correct, that my resolution, that a resolution be written that members of the...
Have to research.
Of the, yeah, and I'll ask Clint to research this and, you know, write the resolution however be appropriate, if this is voted on, that members of the Board of County Commissioners may not hold a board position on any board under the purview of the county.
That's under our purview.
I'll serve. You're moving second to amend?
You got a motion, you got a motion on the floor?
I know.
Okay.
And we're, we just have an amendment to that motion.
But that motion was already voted on.
Yeah. So he resigned.
The one he amended, it was already voted on. No, not this one. This, the one you're on now is the one that he's resigning from tourism and affordable housing.
Okay, then I retire, I resign from the board.
From the boards.
The boards.
You personally are resigning from those two boards.
Correct.
Which were affordable housing and...
Tourism.
Tourism Board. And the chair did accept that verbal resignation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Let the record show that Commissioner Prince is no longer a member of the Tourism Board or the Affordable Housing Board, and...
I had said something earlier, and I think I'd like to just refrain from it, but I want to address this. I was going to make a recommendation that Cart be put on as a voting member of the Tourism Board. I will refrain from making that request at this point and let the board represent to us.
They need to come up with what the board should be bylaws or what they feel is appropriate. Is that okay?
Yeah, and the bylaws state, for the Tourism Board specifically, I haven't looked at affordable housing, that any vacancy...
They recommend to us.
They call it an unnatural vacancy, meaning their term had not expired, would be submitted to the board for consideration by the Tourism Board. I'll get to you, sir.
Yes.
Just to clarify, now that he's not doing it, it really wasn't Cart, it was Chamber that I think you were referencing?
Probably.
And they could not because she's actually being paid, she's ex officio.
No problem.
So therefore, we didn't even have to talk about it.
Putting it back on the tourism, you guys tell us how you'd like to move forward.
I'd like to come back to your comment?
Yes, sir.
As of today, we no longer have a quorum to give you that recommendation.
No.
And as of July 31st, you will have one member of the Tourism Board.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, I don't think we're expecting that today, do you, sir?
I'm just telling you, the Tourism Board doesn't exist.
Okay. Thank you. So, back to you said that...
He said resignation.
He said he's resigned, he's July 31st.
Yes, up to July 31st.
So you said, and I wondered about this, Renee Smith, who represents the Chamber on the Tourism Board as an ex officio member. My question, I should have brought this up at a meeting, and I'll just throw it out real quick. Why is that? Why would she be ex officio when if Chamber's not involved in tourism in this county, we are running backwards?
Well, they are involved. The Chamber...
I mean, it's a voting member. Why they're not involved is a voting member.
I think because the fact that there was a payment, that there were extra people at the time that I think applied, and I think that's a position she wanted was to be ex officio at that time, which has worked out well as the Chamber handling the visitor center. She reports back and forth. It's a good working relationship. There's some things that need changed on the Tourism Board website in regards to that, another issue. But, and then she does do work through the Chamber, and a lot of that has to do with the Tourism Board as well, because they connect very much so. So she helps, and I'm behind the scenes helping with the business aspect and the calendar aspect of it, and Facebook, there's two parts of Facebook.
But I was just asking why she was ex officio, and you said something about she's paid. I just didn't understand.
The Chamber is paid.
Well, it has nothing to do with her.
But she represents the Chamber.
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
And she's, she's being paid through the Chamber for her part.
I don't think that's an issue. I think she could still be a member if she chose to be.
And that's really, that's up to the individual boards. One or more dictate that.
If you choose to, I don't care, she could stay for someone else.
Further comment?
All members are paid. They're in the industry, and they're making a living. They're making money. They're volunteering, though, they do a function. I think she falls in the same category. Maybe. She's a medic.
We do not have a motion on the floor. Are you comfortable with the wording of your last motion that we voted on already? Will you read the second to the last motion just to make sure we're on the same page?
The second to the last motion was to establish a policy by resolution that a sitting commissioner not be a voting member of any board under the county's purview.
And that was seconded and voted on, correct?
Yes.
I think it's appropriate.
But you further said you didn't want them to be on the board at all. So do you need to clarify that? Because right now, it's just a voting member.
Right.
They could be in...
You're resigning from the board. Your commissioner will be on the board.
Yep, great point. I would move that no sitting commissioner serve on a board under the county, board or commission under the county's purview.
That's correct. I'll second it.
We moved and seconded that, again, by resolution, the Board of Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners institute a policy that no sitting commissioner shall serve as a board or commission member under the county's purview. Public comment? Oh, sorry, I'll do the discussion.
Just a quick discussion. It's fine, in my opinion, it will be fine if both resolutions are in one resolution.
Okay, we could wrap those into one?
Yes, and that'd be a good idea, and that keeps it simple.
To amend the original proposed resolution, include that wording?
Yep.
Okay. I'm good with that?
Second.
Good, okay. Public comment?
Did you need to withdraw another motion?
No. We'll leave that on the books, and we'll actually amend that motion to include the wording, no sitting commissioner to serve on said board or the commission. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Very, sorry. Operating under the open sunshine laws can be very cumbersome and awkward sometimes, but that's the way it is. I want to go back, because we've had a couple people join us, and I want, gentlemen, you have an opportunity to introduce yourself. We did earlier. Everybody introduced themselves. You two came in after that, so I would offer that opportunity to you.
Thank you. My name's Evan Brooks, and I'm here to talk about a project called FirstNet. It's a cell tower cellular service proposal from the county to lose hand. That's what I'm here for. Thank you.
And one more, sir, to join last. Oh, yeah.
I'm Eldy Walker.
First name again?
The initials, L.D.
L.D.
Our wife, Ann.
Thank you. Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome to all three of you, and rightfully so. Mr. Brooks, you are next on the agenda. You are welcome to come up. We'd like to welcome you, first of all. Did I miss something?
Um, well, do you need to table the appointee of the Tourism Member? That's what's on the...
Yeah, we probably should, and I actually have, I'd made a note to myself here.
Your board can't even function.
With our, with our...
Right, has to be tabled, we have to amend.
Yeah. With my apologies, sir, we need to back up. So, okay, thank you, sir. I would move that we table a Tourism Board Member appointment.
I'll second.
We moved and seconded to table the item of business concerning appointing a Tourism Board Member. Discussion, gentlemen. Actually, it's not debatable, but we're going to do it. Let's do it. Let me say this, and it may get to what Angie's going to address. I understand that obviously the Tourism Board now is in a state of flux. We understand that. I also know that they're not scheduled again to meet until September. The, I believe, and I will ask counsel about this eventually, I believe we have the authority to appoint people to boards. We may not, but if we do, and that has to happen, we can do that. Any, assuming that the Tourism Board now, or eventually, will not have a quorum, then I think that the commissioners can appoint. I think they can still hear suggestions from the members of the Tourism Board, but we're getting into kind of a legal area. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, even though they're not, we're not meeting until September, there's some work that's being done that...
Oh, you can function. I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, and I also know that there's, I think, three qualified people that have presented in the interest.
It's true.
So, and that possibly, you know, if that can happen, we do a workshop.
Well, and I know you have input. Let me just throw this in real quick. I would certainly consider as a commissioner appointing those people right now. Don't have a problem with that, but go ahead, sir.
And I was about to say the same thing. I started by saying I think we should postpone it, but in light of developments that have occurred, maybe we ought to go ahead and move forward on that at this point, so we can have members of the Tourism Board and move forward. My issue is, I understand there are three applicants. I have only seen letters from two. That is an issue for me.
I have another issue like that.
Okay, so...
Afterward, you get that point by...
Let me reinstand for a second, because the debate is on whether or not to table this motion, or to table the item of business on the agenda. So I'm going to withdraw my motion to table. Second withdrawn?
Okay, I'll second it.
Well, he seconded my motion to table. So the motion to table the item of business concerning the Tourism Board Member Appointment has been withdrawn.
So we need to address it?
I would move that we appoint Kit Tyler as a voting member of the, let me rephrase that. I would, I move that we approve the recommendation of the Tourism Board and appoint Kit Tyler as a voting member of the Tourism Board.
Can I ask a question first?
Legally, no.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded, thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation from the Tourism Board to appoint Kit Tyler to the Tourism Board.
That's fine. Okay, so from my point of view, yes, we have three candidates out there, and we could approve that or consider. However, I do believe because of the change in the board, I've also had many other people say I would put a letter in if somebody was out of there, or we got a whole new clean sheet. So I would rather see anybody in this town that's interested in showing us a letter of interest to be considered, not just the three we're with now. And that's why I don't want to approve anybody yet. I think we have time. You pointed that out. We can advertise it again, say we've had a change that's occurred publicly, and so therefore, if anybody else is out there, get your letters into us, and then set a timeline for it.
I would take exception with your wording because according to the bylaws...
I'm just discussing.
Yeah, I got it. I'm just saying that they don't send their letters to us. Their letters of interest to serve on a board have to go to that board.
Okay, so there's...
And then the board, technically, it's to the board unless your bylaws say to Brenda, but...
And then the board...
The bylaws I've written said they have to be submitted to the board.
So it's going to exist the board.
Or commission, whichever it is, and then they forward their recommendations in order of their preference to the Board of County Commissioners. That has been done. That's why I made this motion. The Tourism Board has recommended to the commissioners that we appoint Kit Tyler as a voting member. That's per their recommendation. Yes, ma'am?
The only question I had, which came up at the Tourism Board meeting, and it's only because I've been to other Board of County Commissioner meetings, was residency. And in our bylaws, it states they need to be a resident. They're part-time residents. So that's the only reason I brought it up, because I was at other meetings, and that was a possibility. I went and saw in the bylaws that that is stated there.
I would address that, if I may. I'm assuming, this is risky business when you start assuming things, but the assumption would be as commissioners that that had already been dealt with before we ever got that recommendation. If it has not, then that board has failed to do their job, in this case, the Tourism Board.
And of course, we would see that in what they forwarded to us if they screwed up. That's our job.
I will share this with you as part of this discussion.
Right.
We're almost getting away from where we're at, but I think it's pertinent. This is a definition that I have crafted that I am, I will submit to the county commissioners for consideration. And let me read that to you real quick. Proposed definition of residency of Custer County. For the purposes of determining residency to be eligible to serve on various boards or committees within the county government, the following is a definition of residency for Custer County as determined by the Board of County Commissioners and adopted by resolution of the same board. This is proposed. A person is considered a resident of Custer County provided three of the four following benchmarks or criteria are met. One, the person must have a valid Colorado driver's license with a Custer County address. Two, the person must be a registered voter in Custer County. Three, the person must have, if owned, vehicles registered in the county. And four, the person must regularly receive mail at a Custer County address. The length of residency prior to serving on the board or the committee within the county government shall not be a consideration of eligibility for serving on said board or committee. Here is the problem we run into, and I see it with Fair Board, I see it with Extension Advisory Committee. I see it with extension advisory committee. Those two happen to say, "You must be a resident of Custer County." And then, right away, we get into a discussion of what is a resident. I have sent this to an attorney with CCI, Colorado Counties Incorporated, asked him to look at it and then do a little survey of other counties. He emailed me back. He said he talked to 20 out of the 64 counties. None of them had a residency definition on the books. He said, "I applaud you for making an attempt to do this. I can't think of anything else I would add." I don't think it's fair to say you must meet all four of these criteria, but I thought 75% of it would be reasonable, and I'll probably present this to the board because of this very thing.
Because I think three of those, they don't. I'm not saying that they're not great, because I think they'd be good. It's just you got the bylaws and...
Yeah.
And I know the second one, which was second recommendation.
Right. Which I intentionally was going to deal with these one at a time.
Yeah.
Public comment? Yes, sir?
Forgive my harsh words, but this is one of the reasons that we had to recall election for two of the three county commissioners. One of the people that you're recommending, I think, shows a distinct lack of showing dignity to other human beings and a lack of respect. That is, I don't care how qualified... They could be the most qualified person to be on the board, but if they can't show dignity or respect to other people, I can't support them to be on that board.
Okay. You understand my motion?
Yes.
You said the two or three you're recommending. I'm only recommending one person.
I know that. I was trying to be polite.
Fine. Okay. Other public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the recommendation from the tourism board to appoint Kit Tyler as a voting member, say aye.
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 Propose nay?
Motion carries.
Yes, sir. How many vacancies do we... Are we going... How many vacancies are there available to be filled?
Two.
Two more.
Two.
Two more.
Two left. Not counting the resignation we heard this morning?
No. He resigned.
Counselor.
And Bob Weisenbach resigned.
And Brent resigned.
And Brent...
And removed. He did not resign.
There's two...
So, there's two left. Yes.
Yeah, so, we just fill one. There were...
That's correct.
There are two left.
That's correct.
So, we can handle that by opening up...
K-T-Y-L-E-R. Kit is not his first name.
Christopher.
Thank you. Christopher Tyler, and forgive me for using his common nickname. The comment that this gentleman here made, was he talking about tip? Were you talking about tip? So, is that a known fact, a general fact, that the guys are... Sure. I will say the commissioners just heard someone's opinion about that. Is that a fair statement? So, that's not a generally accepted opinion? That's just one person's opinion? Can't speak to that. That's exactly. The commissioners just heard one person's opinion about that. That is fact. Yes, ma'am?
I so applaud what you have done this morning. You know where I'm at with that. You have done a fabulous thing this morning. I would just urge you guys to be really careful about making sure that you don't create another dysfunction by who you appoint today. If that means tabling it, talking to people, getting more names, don't jump back into the fire. That's just my feeling. I know you guys just voted on that, but...
I understand what you're saying. I'll get to you in a minute, sir. That is a risk any time a board is asked to approve somebody's recommendation. We have no idea. You go on good faith. You go on your belief in the system and that it will work.
And were these people recommended by people who are no longer on the board?
They were as a board, which was their job. Yes. Yes.
Well... But there might be people on the board now that would...
That could be.
That didn't vote that way.
Okay, so...
I just... And I don't mean to cause trouble, but...
No, if the commissioners decide that they want to take a different route, they're welcome to do that.
So, let me make a couple of comments, and everybody's had a shot. I agree with what we've done. I don't have a problem with pointing, because I don't know him from that. I had a good talk with Greg Smith at length about this issue, because we already knew there was dysfunction on the existing board. It was hard to get anybody to volunteer. But I do believe, unless we know otherwise, Tom pointed out, I only have heard the fact he's got problems just now, that the board itself has a policing function they've got to do. Rather than sitting there and putting up with crap, why did they do that that long? They could have brought up issues, brought up resolutions. They are a board that works for us, and if there is a problem that needs to be brought to our attention, why isn't it brought up or we can deal with? That's part of our job as a commissioner, is to deal with the personnel that work for us. I don't care if it's voluntarily. It is a board that functions for us. So, I'm good with it. We still need two more people on that board, and I believe in... You've heard me say it, a team. It takes a team. No one person is the expert, period. There's a lot of expertise in this room on people that live here in this valley, John Johnson, one. Everybody's got experience in the industry that we want opinions from. You can't have everybody thinking the same or being of the same job. I mean, we want diversity so that you get the best of the best to make the recommendations to bring the people into this county. So, I think it can be handled. We need to deal with the next step.
Sir, if I can ask you a question, if I may, please? With the appointment of Kit, is that his name?
Yes.
Kit, is there a quorum now?
That makes three of us until the end of July.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
That makes three of us. Yes, there's a quorum.
So, there's a quorum.
That's a quorum.
Until the end of July, when Greg resigns.
Okay. Here's what... Here's what my suggestion is. I like what you're saying. I agree. Anybody ought to have an opportunity to show an interest in coming on. They have a majority where they can make their recommendation to us. I'm not opposed to tabling any further appointments now that there is a quorum and let them come back to us. And we may have to have a meeting sooner than your next one that you have. I think it's September. Is that correct?
That's the next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, but that just means we can't have a workshop in between...
Doesn't mean you can't have a meeting either, actually.
Exactly. And my thing is, I feel that this needs to go out ASAP. When we did it before...
I need to get you back up in front. There's so many things going on. I mean, I've said in these meetings, you have your plate full, you're doing a terrific job. Don't get me wrong.
Right.
And I'm really sorry that Greg has resigned, because I think he's done a terrific job. This is my personal opinion. That is not anything here for the V O C C. I'm sorry that happened and fallout led to that.
I'm blown away.
But I think you need to dust off within smackdown, get up. I agree with Commissioner Candace. Let's put it back out. Let's get whatever letters we need, and let's get this on the track.
That's what I'm saying. I like to get those letters. I mean, the word out and give it time.
Example, I know we have another one from Mr. Ellison. I've read that, and I was impressed with it. I heard there was one from Mr. Johnson. I have not seen it.
I sent it forward, and Brenda sent it to everybody.
Yeah, it's a forward.
You got it. You've got it in there, okay?
No, I have not seen it, and I'm not debating whether... I mean, I don't remember seeing it. That doesn't matter.
Another question, and it probably means another resolution that might be part of this. I've been concerned about sitting here like a vegetable and having committees do the things we should have them do. I would like to know how many people worked, put the letters in. I would like to know the reasons why these people were selected, you know, and the great expertise that blends in with this and that. It makes it clear.
We can't make a decision without that information.
That's right. We have to have the information.
Yeah.
And so, even the reasons why they didn't include somebody, because they could have the same expertise, and maybe the time and residency wasn't... I think residency matters, the length of time, because if you've been in the industry long enough, you understand the business practices and things around the county. I would like to think they would have a little more. Or not. It depends on what they used criteria. So, how do we... I think that's something we can talk about later when these letters come in to know what... It's not just, "Show me the interest and give me your address, and you're automatically on the board."
Absolutely agree with that. I absolutely agree with that.
The quorum is a majority of your membership, which is three.
Right. One thing I will say, since this has came up, and I saw John's, we don't have a criteria that says... It just says letter of interest.
Yeah.
So, that's something that we need to develop.
Come up with something good for us to consider, or otherwise, we're going to turn it around.
Exactly.
So, the chair will entertain a motion to postpone any further appointments.
I'll move that we postpone any further appointments for a period of time to allow the committee to put out for further solicitations of potential members that will meet your criteria, and then you'll do your vetting and come to us with your recommendations to fill.
I think you ought to say no later than 30. Okay, second. It's one minute to make a timeline. I think get it done at...
That's what I'm...
Get put the gun on them, get it out there.
Probably not.
About the end of August.
And I started to... I was thinking that, but then I was...
I'd say that'd be a tourism board decision.
Yeah, I really do, because I don't know when it can get...
What if they say December?
You know, I don't know if they're going to put in just the paper of... Just the paper that the county has...
Paper of record.
I don't know. It's their choice, and how long they want to give people to get back. I really think we ought to lead with them, but let's recommend that we try and get it done by the end of August. Is that... Can I say that?
No later than...
The bylaws say...
I'm looking at you, because you're the only member I know that's sitting here, and I'm trying to put the burden on you, Angie.
No, I'm not. I'm not.
Bylaws say...
This is something I was going to bring up anyway, as far as there's no guideline as to what we want from them.
Again, that's within the tourism board.
You decide, and then you'll come to us and relate to...
But your bylaws...
Sorry.
And basically, when we...
And we may, as Commissioner Candace said, say to you, "Why did you choose Person A over Person B?"
You want to know all...
It's a very fair question. So, do you think potentially by the end of August, that's two months, basically?
Definitely, because I know that there are other people, like Mr. Candace said.
There may be outstanding people out there just begging to get on that we don't even know about. So, if you feel that potentially by the end of August, you could meet with us at that August 31st meeting?
Okay.
Two comments, and I'll call for orders of the day. One, your bylaws state that you shall attempt to bring those... Fill those vacancies within 90 days. And secondly, according to your bylaws, paper of record and the bulletin board in the courthouse, those are minimum for you posting such notices as to request new membership. So, I'll call for orders of the day. All in favor of voting on the motion to postpone further appointments of the tourism board? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose nay? Motion carries.
Let's move on.
Yeah, we need to move on.
Okay, about three hands up.
I'm going to ask you folks to just hold on, because we have had an agenda item on here. This person has sat here for over an hour and a half waiting, and we are not getting ready to vote on an item, so therefore, the chair, by protocol, is not required to recognize comments from the public. I'm sorry. I hope you understand that. Mr. Brooks, would you please come forward, sir?
He's been in awe of this process.
How are you? Good to see you again.
Hi, Evan Brooks.
Bill Candace, Jay Prince. Nice to see you, sir. I'm sure you... Yeah, you're welcome. See, I want to...
Brenda.
I want you to know, sir, that we are live streaming this meeting. If you care to, the camera's right there, so if you want to kind of ease around that way a little bit, at least... Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. So, for the record, Mr. Brooks and I have been in contact. He asked, or I actually asked him if he would come up and meet with us pertaining to propose AT&amp;T tower site, that AT&amp;T would like to lease property from the county to install a tower based on a 50 by 50 foot footprint. And so, he said, yes, he would be willing to come and meet with the board and share some information, maybe stand for some questions. So, with that, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I'll begin with just a brief introduction about what this... What these terms mean. So, at...
You can slide your chair back there if you want to, so your back's not to everybody.
As Commissioner Flower mentioned, a couple of months ago, AT&amp;T had asked us to locate a cell tower in this area for a project that's called FirstNet. And FirstNet is a... Basically, an emergency or public safety broadband project that was kind of got its genesis after 9/11/2001, and federal government took 15 years to figure out what might be a solution to this, and it was basically a way for first responders all over the nation to be on one network, and most importantly, to have priority. So, it's part of this normal cellular telephone network that you're all familiar with and cellular data network that I'm sure you're familiar with using your smartphone. This would allow all emergency personnel to basically have priority over the rest of us. So, if there was emergency, it allows them to really kick off other users. Those calls get dropped so that the first responders can get the space that they need, which is a really nice feature. I mean, the other obvious feature is the coverage, and that this Colorado has mandated certain communities, certain places, and... Go ahead. It's okay. That they would like installations in order to cover the state, and one of those places is here, one of those places happens to be elsewhere in the county, but that's not on the table for today. So, that's kind of what this means, and then for the community. But this is not just a FirstNet antenna. This is an AT&amp;T, so anyone that subscribes to AT&amp;T Wireless will have the benefit of this. What we're asking the county for is would they lease a parcel of land to AT&amp;T Wireless for the installation of this equipment? We've talked over the past couple of months about various sites, and I'm not sure if you would like me to propose a site or if you want to...
I'll talk about that.
Okay. And see if there's any other things that might be useful. So, I guess really, at that time, I think I'll stop and ask if there's any questions.
Okay.
Sir, thank you so much for coming to talk into us. I really appreciate that. I read the proposed agreement, and I'm very, very uncomfortable approving a contract, and this was brought out by counsel. Thank you, Cliff, for bringing that up, that could bind the county for 75 years. That's a concern to me, because I don't know what future generations and future commissioners may feel, and that's a concern to me. I don't have a problem if there are other opportunities for the county to say, "No longer are we willing to continue." If there are 10-year terms or something like that, I would feel much more comfortable. My concern is this huge length of time. Frankly, I think in 75 years, probably towers are going to be unnecessary. Some magic is going to happen, and we'll beam it around, or whatever. It's high in the sky. But I'm just concerned about these three commissioners, me in particular, because I[1620.33] won't speak for them, binding the county to something that potentially could last 75 years. That's my big concern, sir.
And if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brooks, but I think you had sent that contract kind of as in good faith to just give us a starting point, or was that your actual proposal to the county?
You're right, it was a sample lease so that you could begin to review it.
Right.
There are certain things, typically when we deal with public jurisdictions, either a city or a county or even state or federal lands, there are certain things that they can't agree to. And so, we want you to see that upfront and, you know, and say, well, that's not something as a public entity we can agree to. But you're absolutely right, the length, we can certainly discuss the length and that's, we should be much shorter. The typical lease, I'll tell you right now, the typical lease is five, five-year terms, so a total of 25 years. Each term, each, at the end of each five years, the, the contract is up for renewal.
I can look.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out because that was.
Thank you for clarifying that. When I read I'd go, whoa, I'm not.
Yeah, and I also sent that contract knowing that from my perspective you were throwing this out to say, hey, here's a sample contract that we, that we look at, you guys can certainly do whatever. Uh, yeah, I had that same reservation about the length of that time and committing future administrations to something, although I know it does happen, but I just thought that was an inordinately long time. Um, I guess a question I have is if we lease to AT&amp;T, they put up a tower, it has FirstNet radios on it, does then that FirstNet signal get sent out only to AT&amp;T customers or does it go to every cellular phone owner in the county or do you know about that? Can you address that?
If I understand your question correctly, do, do the antennas work for AT&amp;T Wireless customers and AT&amp;T FirstNet Wireless customers?
Any Wireless cellular customer. Just, just the FirstNet portion of it. Would that go out to me if I own a Verizon phone?
My understanding is that, that the FirstNet program was, that contract was granted to AT&amp;T by the federal government. And so AT&amp;T has the FirstNet network.
Right.
Verizon does not, T-Mobile does not, Sprint does not. So the, the emergency responders, the counties and other jurisdictions that wanna sign up for this have, do it through AT&amp;T because they have, they currently hold the federal contract for that. Now.
Yeah, it's not to the common citizen.
It's not, no, it's, it's not. But if, now as a.
The average citizen.
Personal, you know, private individual that has AT&amp;T will also be using those, their phone will be using those antennas. Yes.
Well, this tower would be AT&amp;T service only.
Correct. At this time.
However, I did ask, would that, would, could we include in this contract a stipulation that AT&amp;T must entertain the opportunity to enter into a contractual agreement with other companies to put their equipment on that tower?
For FirstNet only or for cellular service?
He's got, he's got two.
Very separate.
Right. He has two functions, one's the emergency service, the other's AT&amp;T only service.
Absolutely correct.
He could, Tom's got a good question, can you lease it to somebody else?
Um, yes, the answer is yes. Because we see that actually in jurisdictions zoning policies, language exactly like that, saying you have to make a good faith effort to allow others to, to locate on that same tower. I'll tell you, you know, one of the most common technical issues we come into is, is height. And if Verizon comes along in a year and says, well, we wanted to be, we wanted to be at that height, you run a foot to worse, and then they say, well, that height's not, that's not available.
Right.
It's already booked.
It's already booked.
That, that's the most common thing that kinda everybody can understand.
But that's business.
But that's business and, and, but again, yeah, I, I think, I think that is a reasonable request, so yes.
Uh, you had.
Couple of questions. You got a tower not far out of town, AT&amp;T does, why isn't that acceptable?
Um, which direction or location?
North.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that tower. I am familiar with one that's about a mile and a quarter from here that's on some open land.
So why, why, I'm just asking why is this the optimum position? For a couple of reasons.
Sure.
One is, that's another, I like the idea of having another, from a cell phone point of view, forget the FirstNet thing of foreign in the valley. But there's the height of this thing and, and we already have a pretty good sized tower in here. I think your proposed, one of your sites was on top of the existing tower, taking that tower down, using it. But we do have height issues that we gotta get through public hearing on, those kinds of things.
Okay.
So why is this the optimum site?
Um, good question. The optimum site is really determined by the Colorado FirstNet when they say, AT&amp;T, these are the sites that you need to develop, we need coverage at this spot to go in these directions to, to send a signal and receive a signal in various directions. I've looked at those maps, I'm not an engineer, but I have looked and they basically say, well, we wanna go east towards Pueblo, we wanna go north on 69, and we wanna go south on 69. Those are the areas where there's lack of coverage and where we feel like they're the most needed in case there was.
From an emergency service point of view.
Right, right. Now, as far as the other tower, because I don't know exactly where it is, I do know of a tower about a mile and a quarter from here, it's out in an open field, but those are not AT&amp;T antennas, those are another, another company. But the, but, but the real basic answer to your question is that AT&amp;T and through the FirstNet program, you know, has been told, this is where we need coverage. And so AT&amp;T says, well, in order to get that, we need to be here.
You need to have a fiber connection to be.
Um, yes, we need to have a fiber connection. There's two ways of doing, well, there's two, we need to have a high-speed connection, the way cell, cell calls go from cell to cell, but ultimately those cell calls are going through existing wires. And so, to have fiber is, is great. If we don't have fiber available, then we can use a microwave dish also mounted on the tower that functions in the same way. Do you know if there's fiber in the community or somewhere nearby?
There is.
Okay. Who's the?
Certain areas.
Certain areas.
Seacom.
Seacom.
Is that right?
CenturyLink. Oh, CenturyLink has the antenna.
Um, well, that, those are definitely some things I'd like to talk about with the person that's best in the know because that.
Our geniuses are back there.
Okay, great. We'll talk to you after.
Because that will influence really the, what, what needs to be built in order to service this. Mic, but anyway, those calls, it's interesting that those calls ultimately go through the ground if you're going anywhere outside of the next cell tower.
And what's the height of the tower?
Um, again, it depends on the, on what we find out about the, the fiber versus microwave, that's a very important question. In order to do some of the things that Commissioner Flowers asked about, you know, probably 130 to 150 feet now. And that's because of, again, if you wanna loc, if you wanna locate other antennas on there from Verizon, from T-Mobile, from Sprint, then they're gonna wanna be high.
Yeah, we have interference problems.
We don't, there's only two feet separation required between different carriers, but they wanna be high. Everybody wants to be high.
Sure.
And especially if there's any rolling terrain around, which there is here. So that's, that's what we would recommend and that's what AT&amp;T has asked for based on their radio frequency requirements is, is a height in that range. Again, it allows for, it allows for that microwave dish, but we determine later on if that's, that fiber is an option, then we can certainly.
With difficulty.
Okay. And then the other, but to answer your question, the other about the height is, yeah, really like what's, what equipment's gonna be on it, what, how desirable is it to have one tower and not three different towers pop up here?
Need guy wires on?
No, for this design you don't.
150 foot?
No, you don't, don't.
Because we have a emergency, flight for life.
Right, right. And that's, yeah, we definitely wanna address that. There's FCC requirements that we would meet if the status of that becomes a more formal airport in the future or formal landing pad, you know, we can, you know, simply lighting, lighting that tower with a, you know, at night only.
Beacons.
Beacons, yep. There's, and all those things are paid for by the, by the owner of the tower. We can put that in the contract that in the future if we identify that a helicopter, for helicopter safety it needs to be lighted, that, you know, tower owner will pay for that.
And you're gonna have a proposed, what you would be paying for that space?
I have proposed that to the Commissioner, yes.
Um, yeah, lighting, I've, I've spoken with the sheriff and I've spoken with our office of emergency manager, both had asked, is it possible regardless of the height of that tower to light it?
It has to be.
With respect to a heliport, whether it meets FCC requirements to be lit or not.
Okay.
They both felt like, man, we're gonna stick it right here.
FAA.
They agree, or FAA, sorry, not FCC, that it'd be lit.
Yes, yes, it can be.
Contractual.
Yes, it, it can be lit. You're talking about like floodlit or actual beacon?
Beacon or beacon.
Yes.
Several levels.
Without question.
Okay.
Multiple levels, yes.
Another question I had that I wanted to pass on to you was alternative power.
Okay.
Obviously, commercial power would probably be the first.
Yes.
Option, and then what would be the plan for redundancy of power?
Uh, the backup generator that AT&amp;T proposes is a diesel generator. It's include, it's part of their grounds equipment space. It's a diesel generator, it, it would have a double lined tank and, you know, in a community like this where you don't, we would use overhead power, but I don't see if power goes out a lot because there's no trees to knock.
Been there, last winter.
But anyway, that's what it's for. It's a backup generator, it's, you know, it's spec to, you know, that it's gotta run four hours.
Okay.
Before power's restored.
And what about solar battery after that?
Um, they typically don't install solar at any locations unless there's no grid service. That would be the only place that they would do solar, solar panels, batteries.
Uh, fencing. The location that we have talked about, and I visited with the sheriff's office, he is expecting to receive notification about a grant to fence his area around the sheriff's department, which would include the ground that we're talking about.
Okay.
If that were fenced and you, AT&amp;T, had access to that area, would you still think there needs to be fencing around the footprint of this tower?
Uh, good question. So, if I understand you correctly, they would wanna fence kind of their parcel boundary?
Well, they're gonna fence the boundaries, yes.
Okay.
And then if this tower ended up being inside of that, do you think AT&amp;T would wanna fence it again? They don't have a problem with that, they just said, you know, we're gonna fence this.
Right. At this point, if I asked AT&amp;T that question, they would say yes.
Yeah.
They would say yes, they would prefer to, they always prefer to fence it because, I mean, these, this is a lot of expensive equipment in there.
And then what?
And they also just don't want somebody wandering in there and sticking their finger in something and shocking themselves and then.
Climbing up to see how high they.
Right, climbing up the pole and, and so it's, it's really protects the community as well as.
Certainly not an issue, it was just a question they asked me to bring up. And then what about access to that? If it's within this enclosed area of the sheriff's office, would you wanna situate that maybe to share that fence line so you could have access from the street? Or you think they would be okay with accessing it through the sheriff's fenced-in area?
Um, I think the area we're talking about, they're, they're gonna be able to park reasonably close with their truck. And so, we might wanna work with, you know, where the gates are gonna be located, if there's gonna be a gate that a vehicle could access, which I'm sure there probably will be.
That's what the sheriff talked about.
Yeah, and so that would be, but no, we're, we're not talking about a big area. There's lots of areas on farmland, for example, where there's locks for the utility company and a lock for the farmer and a lock for the farmer's neighbor and then water company. And so, it would just be an additional lock on the sheriff's fence for that, for that block.
Yeah, and that may be an issue, he did talk to me about that, that they would be willing to give you their gate code when you, not you, sorry, AT&amp;T, when AT&amp;T comes to work on it, on the tower, but maybe we could situate that to share an external fence so that they wouldn't have to do that, that they could park right there and they'd have their own.
Right.
Gated key or locked gate that they could access without having to go through the sheriff's property. Just.
That'd be fine.
Considerate.
Okay. Good. Usually AT&amp;T is very flexible to what the landowner is, is, you know, proposing about the, what the grounds look like and the landscaping and things like that.
Question off of the police, sir, in light of the Justice Center and the grounds that we're diligently trying to acquire, any issues?
I talked to Sheriff Byerly about that. Uh, I don't wanna really call it a proposed site yet because we're still kinda early in this, but the, the land we're looking at is between the sheriff's office and the search and rescue building that is owned by the county. So it's kinda, it's not landlocked, but it's kinda off over there by itself. We're not talking about sticking it out in the middle of a big open spot. So I, he didn't think.
The tower is not anywhere within the footprint.
Yeah, we have to, I think that's a good question and we sure do need to see where they really propose and what we can offer for it and then we, and that we can work around it, given that we're gonna use that sheriff's building in some capacity.
Right, yeah. And, and that was Sheriff Byerly's contention that obviously if it ends up not being used as a sheriff's office in a jail, would this tower interrupt any other function? His, his opinion was no, and I agree with you, I think it would be.
For you, sir, Mr. Brooks, if, once we hammer out the details and we give the go-ahead, how long would AT&amp;T be after you got our approval, we signed whatever we need to sign? Is this something that you, to immediately or is there a lag time between that?
Um, good question. The timeline it takes is, is, it's kinda like building a house, almost, it's, it's about six months. There are some requirements that we have, that we have to follow for, basically anytime we disturb the land and, and we do all that due diligence, but that, that process requires a lot of federal government sign-offs because it's, there's an FCC, because it's an FCC project essentially. And that, that, that process is what really takes up about three months at a time. In the meantime, we can be doing other steps and not just waiting for that to end, but I would think, and also the weather is an issue.
How you want it over there?
You know, I, I haven't spent a winter here, I've spent a couple of times, a couple of weeks in the summer, but, you know, to figure out, you know, what, what can be done to the weather, you have to dig before the frost hits or.
Long as killing it.
Can't be done over here. So I think, you know, realistically, after you give approval, six months, it would be done.
What's the time crunch? Is there some emergency here?
Well, there, there, the, there is a time crunch because basically when AT&amp;T agreed to, you know, made their proposal to the federal government, they said we would have these sites up by.
By, yeah.
A certain point. And this is by, by tomorrow, the end of June, you know, we really should have had all the sites selected. So, we should have been to all the land, landowners around the state where we're putting up towers. So that's really where we are. That's the only firm deadline. Other, like, like he just referred to, some towers can be built in four months, some might take 12 months because of weather. We have, in some of these areas, we have about a four-month window in which we can work.
So are you asking us today not to give approval, but to conceptually say, we're on board and we're moving forward, working towards an agreement? Would that help you with your timeframe?
It would. I would, I guess my request would be for the county to lease land to, to AT&amp;T for an area no, no larger than 50 foot by 50 foot or no larger than 2,500 square feet because it might, those dimensions might change slightly. But to lease that land for an agreeable period of time, likely 25 years, and then.
At five year.
At five, at five-year increments. And then, and then yes, to answer your question, with the lease details to be worked out with the appropriate county officials.
Okay, so that brings up, I mean, that's a good point, Jay. What happens if we, if we look at this and say no? What do you, do you have an alternative? Because, because what he's pointing out, we do have to take this and we consider it. I, I think it's a good idea to enter an MOU to say, let's consider doing it maybe as a first step and that helps you with your boss saying, well, you got these guys talking about it or anything. But, uh, we need to understand a lot of things like the, the actual, there's a lot of things we, we, you've said have been just notional. We need the details, we need to publicly let the public hear it and understand it and how it fits with our big strategic vision. A lot of those kinds of things might take a month or two to do this, I don't know.
And I, and I concur with what you're saying, but I think we could conceptually say, provided we don't run into any major road rocks, the negotiations fall apart.
Give him something to hang on to that says, we understand, we like emergency services, there's no question about that.
Right, and that's the comment I was gonna make. I'm trying to find the downside to this in terms of safety for our citizens, number one. That's number one in my book. Added additional AT&amp;T service is great. Now whether people switch over from whatever they have to AT&amp;T, that's their personal business, I couldn't care less.
Well, and we get other services potentially.
Understand, but this FirstNet is a big deal and I've paid a lot of attention to it over the years. And I don't know how we could say anything other than, I love the concept, is this the right place? Is this the right contract and those kinds of things, so.
If I could answer or respond to your questions about other locations, we did, you know, really carefully look at the entire ring, the search ring, and really, again, based on the requirements from the FirstNet program on AT&amp;T, where they feel like they need to get the signal to and receive the signal from, it really limited us surprisingly, you know. We, first of all, the town of West Cliff said, you know, absolutely, we don't want you to, to put a tower on the west side of 69 because it's kind of a different character in that neighborhood.
Off is a problem.
Right. So we, you know, we respected that. We looked at private landowners as well as the county land, as well as the city land, as well as some water maintenance land. Some of those parcels are still viable, however, they're, they're not quite as big. Would not allow for this co-location, this location of Verizon or T-Mobile or Sprint on those. So that's a, you know, those are not as, as favorable. But just, I just wanted to address that, but yet, you know, we, we really have looked everywhere and we've, you know, even within the county-owned properties and the medical district properties, you know, without interfering with the helicopter, I'm looking at the picture up on the wall, the, you know, it's, it's pretty limited what, what's, what's in this, this ring that AT&amp;T gave us, it's very tight ring.
Okay. Clint, Clint, is there a, an MOU that we can come out of this meeting and say we would like to consider this and, and move forward at a little, you know, step at a time here, but we do have to consider all the details that he's got yet to propose?
Can we even do an MOU?
I don't know, I'm asking.
Or can we just say?
It's really about leasing the land and then if you, the, the lease that we would offer is going to cover the design and, and you as the land, landowners and landlords is going to cover the design, and you, as the land, landowners and landlords, would then, you have to approve every part of that. So, if you are not happy with the design, we continue those negotiations until we get a design that you're happy with. And if we never get to a signed lease, then that's, then we never get to a signed lease. But, the, in my opinion, the first step would be, you know, are you interested in leasing the land? I mean, it's sort of like any project the county builds, I'm not, you know, you don't figure out the final design maybe at the, at the initial part, or, I'm not sure how much the public, public is involved in that. So, that's really what we're looking for at this point, is, you know, are you interested? Is this site appropriate? The sheriff's weighed in, I guess, and, and now you're getting more, kind of more details from me, the most I can provide right now. But, the, the tower that we're again proposing is 130 to 150 feet. It will need to, it will need to host this microwave dish unless refined fiber that's viable nearby, which actually is preferred, because trees grow and things happen, and microwaves, you know, wired is always better than wireless. I'll stop there, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for answering our questions, and thank you for being patient to sit through part of our other meeting. New singular or wireless? Difference between that and AT&amp;T?
There is no difference. When these, yeah, I think it's one of those kind of business, doing business as kind of things.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I looked at the contract, and that automatically renewal of the five-year things kind of spooked me a little when we talked about that. But, those are items that we could negotiate through and work through.
It is, I mean, keeping in mind that really the spirit of the contract is that, that the wireless carrier, whoever it may be, they do make a big investment in construction. This is like, this is like building a house, and it tosses a lot of money to, and so they are, they want to hold this lease as long as possible, because they, they've invested a lot, and they want, obviously, the landlord to be amenable to that. But, but they have no incentive to leave after five years or 10 years.
And then, just as a comment for the public, we're talking about tubular tower, most likely, is that correct?
That may change, Commissioner Flower, because of the height, and this, this gets into a report that I just got on Monday from AT&amp;T. They have, there's, they have this repeater that sends signals, it's somewhere here in town, I'm not sure exactly where. It might be on the, on the site that you were, you were talking about. But, that is failing. It is, it is being blocked, the line of sight is being blocked. And so, they want to put that piece of equipment onto this new tower, and they want to put it at 125 feet above the ground. Well, that's five feet higher than what I talked to you about initially.
Right.
Again, this is brand-new information, just came to me Monday. That, but again, for that, for that reason, for the ability to do other locations, you know, we'll propose a couple of options to you. One will be a pole, but the other will be a, a traditional kind of lattice-type tower. I'm trying to think if I saw one coming in, but, I mean, it looks very similar to the, but to the search and rescue tower, although, although bigger, beefier, because that one would not handle the amount of equipment. It gets into technical specs about, when the wind blows, is this thing going to stand up? And, when you have a lot of heavy equipment, it doesn't work so well on a pole. Gets into technical questions, again, of how big then, you know, how deep is your foundation and your case on? And it, it's really, really big on those single poles.
With, gentlemen, with your permission, I would like to ask our two people in the audience who are versed in, obviously, broadband, towers, that kind of thing, just for a couple of, and I would ask brief, because we're kind of going outside of our stated policies or procedures in running our meetings, questions or comments that you would have from Mr. Brooks? Quickly, I know you're willing to meet with him afterwards if he's available, but, for the good of the order?
I think the clarification that he's given, obviously, covers a number of the concerns. Devil's in the details, but I, for, you know, 30,000-foot view, so to speak, he's, I think he's done a very good job.
Yeah, originally, our conversation was at 100 to 120-foot tower. But, given what Mr. Brooks just shared with us, obviously adding space for additional service providers, and their own equipment, you know, we're looking at bumping that maybe to maximum of 150, would you say?
Yes, max, yeah.
Mr. Martin, any?
Who is SSC?
SSC, that's the name of my company, the abbreviation for my company, Post Selective Site Consultants. We have an office in Denver, that's where I live. We, all, not all carriers, but most of the carriers use what's called a third-party, and that's what we do.
So, your job is to find and obtain-
Find a site, basically go from finding a site all the way till building it.
Yeah, he is not with AT&amp;T. He's hired.
And normally, the tower that you would be involved with finding, designing, maybe designing, I don't know if you've got to do the design work, would be handed over to a specific tower company that would build the tower. AT&amp;T wouldn't build this tower, it would be built by a third-party.
It would be constructed by a third-party.
Third-party, generally owned by a third-party who had a contract with AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, whomever, for a, a number of years.
To answer both questions, on the first side, yeah, construction, the construction company would build it, contractor. On the second side, that would, I don't know the answer to that question, but, but at the time of kind of obtaining approvals from jurisdictions and building permits, it's for AT&amp;T to explore a new site and tower.
They desire to live on it.
Yes. But, maybe not, they're the ones making lease payments.
That's not good or bad, I just think we need to be aware. There'll be an AT&amp;T service.
Like, right, in the future, I mean, I think like any contractor, it would be assigned and be sold.
And they will be, over the life of 25 years. How about Deer Peak?
Good question. That's a project I'm personally working on. We have yet to actually select a spot that will, that will work.
Would you have one in Deer Peak and one in West Cliff, first in either order?
No, it's the FirstNet, the FirstNet project specified decided Deer Peak.
So, FirstNet wants to have two locations within Custer County?
That's correct.
And, again, for the, you mentioned this map, which made me think about that, just for the sake of discussion. The site that we are currently looking at, nothing's been decided. But, this is the sheriff's office, here's the search and rescue building, here's the EMS building, and we're talking about maybe looking at this piece of property directly south of the sheriff's office, probably closer to the street for access purposes, but, so that gives you a general idea of what we're talking about.
Which is a good point, because, sure, the office already has a tower on it, there's a lot of stuff on it, you going to move all that over?
It would be up to, so AT&amp;T is the tower owner.
Is that feasible to do?
It's feasible, that equipment's not very heavy. It is feasible to do that.
Gets rid of another tower.
Right.
Looking at it from a helicopter point of view.
Yep, yep. There, the sheriff's tower's about 50 feet, you think?
A little more than that.
Oh, is it? The search and rescue.
Go out and take a look at it.
Oh, I've seen it, yeah. Because I just haven't dropped a tape measure from the top.
Another question I have is, who would, who's going to do the design of the infrastructure that will be constructed there?
That's what my company does.
Your company does?
Yeah, we have architects and engineers that design that, we present it to the landowners.
And then there would be a bid phase, or do you do?
There, for the, bid phase for the construction. AT&amp;T then bids out the construction. We give the design to AT&amp;T, what the, what the landowner has approved, and then AT&amp;T determines how to get it built.
And you were, I heard you mentioning that you're proposing a diesel generator with a four-hour capacity?
Well, I was, I, I, don't quote me on that, I shouldn't reflect that.
Hope it's more than that.
There's something about, yeah, I may, you know, I apologize, that's, that's probably not accurate, but I know it's a, it does have a tank.
It's not uncommon to have an eight-hour outage in West Cliff, and so you need to make sure that this thing is constructed for five nines, because this becomes public safety infrastructure.
Right.
It should never be down.
That's a good point, and I'll, I'll get clarification on the, the hours, but it's got to be much longer than that.
And do you do the design for solely the AT&amp;T, or if this is being viewed as an, as an alternate for other carriers that might live? Do you build the infrastructure, the generators, the battery backup, et cetera, that it sits on to accommodate one carrier or N-carrier?
Good question. The, your questions are definitely from somebody in, in the industry. So, basically, the way it works is the tower share, could be shared by everybody. The compound, the 50-by-50-foot compound is, is that large in order to accommodate more equipment. At the initial stage, AT&amp;T's equipment would be like an eight-foot by eight-foot-
You build a co-location.
Building, right. There'd be, but that's the reason for the 50-by-50-foot compound, is that, so you can put other people's equipment in there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but do you build it if you get go for a co-location?
Yes.
Okay, so it's designed for N-carrier, not one?
Absolutely, right, absolutely.
Quickly, we'll move ahead, Clint, sir, you had a quick question.
That was a dumb question, don't worry about it. I'm just curious about the generator, why would you use diesel, because it'd go down after a while, I'm not pro-
Propane, that was actually suggested to me, that we talk about propane versus-
And that, and those details can all be ironed out in the lease, that's totally fine.
Again, you know, we were talking, going to have a tank maybe either way, but that's a great point, Clint, that's a good common sense point, appreciate that. Real quick, sir.
You had talked about a lighted tower, is that enough to satisfy the landing zone for search and rescue, for fight for life?
I believe a red light on that would. I don't think we're going to have to satisfy FAA. I think it's got to be 200 feet. We're going to be under that. We're doing this is for ourselves.
There is a requirement, though, Tom, on structures near land.
Yes, within a certain distance.
It has to be within that, for FAA reasons, and, and that respects the safety and the whole thing.
Right, yes, sir.
I would like to move that the county embraced the concept of allowing AT&amp;T to erect a tower, roughly in the site that they're talking about, at a height that will be determined at some point, under terms and conditions to be determined. But, conceptually, I'd like to say that, my motion is that, conceptually, the, the Custer County embraces the concept, we'd like to move forward with negotiating and working through the details, which there are many, many of.
On, on a proposed piece of ground of the county, oh.
Right, right. That's county on the site.
We just need to say we're embracing it.
Close to what we're talking about.
Right, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to a second, and the county moved forward with negotiations with SSC, representing AT&amp;T for the purpose of selecting and leasing, selecting a site and leasing said site to AT&amp;T for a tower discussion.
Under, under provisions that will be acceptable?
Both parties.
Both parties.
Yeah, thank you. I have another quick question. Would it be fair if the commissioner said to the residents of this county who were a subscriber of AT&amp;T, that their service probably will be better with this tower?
That's a very fair statement, yes.
So, if you are-
As a, as a longtime and often visitor, mine as well, so.
So, not just FirstNet?
Oh, absolutely, this is an, yeah, this is-
We can be assured that there's going to be a cellular provider tower as well.
Absolutely, yes.
Hold on, sir. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, before we vote, public comment?
Yes, sir.
A general question, and this seems like it's FirstNet tied into your company, that's tied into AT&amp;T, they're, they kind of come as this bundle. Is there a similar product from Verizon?
So, just to clarify, some, my company is called a site acquisition company. We're really more like a real estate service company. We don't, we work for other carriers too, we work for others, so we don't have any knowledge, I mean-
You're not tied to FirstNet.
We're not tied to the FirstNet. Hypothetically, I can, we could, AT&amp;T could just come back in a week and say, no, we should deal with another site acquisition company. So, we're not, we're not even named in the contract, we're invisible. We just do the work for them. Now, as far as your second question of, like, AT&amp;T is the FirstNet provider, they have the FirstNet network, so other, other carriers do not.
Do they have a comparable product?
No, because it's, well, for First, I can't, I can't say with any certainty that Verizon could, might offer something for first responders as well. But, but I can't, I can't say with any certainty. This, this is, was the federally mandated program that said, basically, all emergency services organizations around the country need, need to have a way to get connected to each other, and have reliable cell coverage and reliable data coverage. So, that's, that's what this is about. Does that answer your question?
Well, uh-
Not exactly.
It's kind of, I'm just a little bit shaky on it, in that it says that it's, really does seem tied to AT&amp;T, and I don't know.
It is, it is.
Okay, I don't know that anybody has looked at, does Verizon have something similar?
Well, I think, let me, let me give my interpretation, and then we can get, because this is what I've heard him say. Federally speaking, the federal government put a contract out for FirstNet, AT&amp;T won. And, and maybe it's by region, and Verizon may have a piece of that big picture in another state or another county, I don't know. But, for this district, and the fact that AT&amp;T is here as a FirstNet service provider is a part of the federal program. That's my interpretation, now, you can help clarify.
No, that's correct.
And FirstNet was a patented business model, and AT&amp;T aggressively sought that and won that from the feds. Now, does that preclude another company from offering something? Hard to say. Quickly, sir.
We were informed during Mountain Connect by the Office of Information Technology State, that in fact, while what he says is correct, what Bill says is correct, as far as the federal program goes, AT&amp;T is the, the contract nationwide.
Right.
We were informed that competitive companies are, have indicated an intent to provide similar service. And that's about the extent of the knowledge. Part of, part of the problem that's inferred with that is, these two or three systems might not be able to talk to each other, and that seems for some of us to violate potentially what the original intent was of being able to have all our emergency services tied together.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
My only caution is, from experience, is, I worked for a company in South Carolina that put in a big tower next to a community, and when we lit that thing up, the community went crazy. Had to be real careful about the lighting, but, we had strobe lights on that thing.
Right, oh, yeah, that won't fly in this county.
Which is what will be there.
Dark skies. Pardon?
It would, it would be more, I'm envisioning more of just a red.
That's what I thought.
A red beacon, not, not lit from the ground.
Flashing things would be in there.
Wow, yeah. It's, it's pretty benign, I think.
But, if you're talking about strobes, and, or floodlights, or whatever is there, is that you're going to run into a problem with the dark sky designation?
There's no dark sky. Well, there is in towns, and that would be something we would have to visit with them about, you're right. I was going to say, there's no, but just, we're not talking about county, we're talking about municipality, so.
Needs to be part of the discussion.
Yeah.
That's why we have to have-
It's a great point, thank you. I had not thought about that, because I was thinking about a red, maybe flashing beacon light, and that was it. But, certainly, it's a great point. Yes, ma'am?
Does the town of West Cliff have to approve it?
I had a conversation with Mike Carter, who Evan has also visited with him about, and, didn't feel like they did. They said they were good with it, actually, you know, they're, they're even for him.
You know, I would look at it, that has to be, because you could put a tower 200 yards outside the city limits, the town will have, have the same ability to get involved with that tower, just like any citizen would. And we got, our, currently, our county ground is inside the city limits, but the town has to have an ability to say a yea or nay on it, from a public point of view, just like you did.
And you've met with Mike?
Yes.
More than once.
I talked with him just a couple of days ago.
So, I, thank you for that, both of your points, well taken, and so noted, yeah, we will have those discussions, yes. Towers and church staples aren't regulated by town governments.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. Hearing no further debate, we'll proceed to vote on the motion, which states that the county moved forward with Evan Brooks representing SSC on behalf of AT&amp;T to look at leasing a piece of ground to them, for the installation of a tower.
Potentially.
Under terms and conditions of a negotiated contract. Hold on, favor say aye? Aye, post nay? Motion carried. Thank you, sir, again, I appreciate your patience.
This will be a win for everybody.
Yeah, and we will, we will formalize this now a little more between the commissioners. I've kind of been unofficially just being a go-between liaison, trying to say, hey, this, what we're thinking, not thinking, probably won't work, will work. I didn't act. I don't believe on any official capacity and haven't committed to counted anything other than what we did here today. So with that, I thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would request about a three-minute break.
You better make it five, Tom. It ain't going to work.
It's a small.
Call the meeting back to order. Thank you, folks, for allowing us to take a few minutes for a break. We will move on. Our next item of business is consideration of the updated Tower IGA. Gentlemen, I think you have copy of that in front of you.
Yep.
I think council has had an opportunity to review this again. So in a nutshell, I can say that the basic change from the one that we had looked at previously was on page two, and it dealt with the idea that the parties all involved would be billed quarterly by the county for the operation expenses of those towers. And everybody was pretty much on board. We discussed this at a Custer Emergency Services meeting, and everybody kind of was in agreement, hey, put the language in there and send it around. Start with the Board of Commissioners and send that back around, and everybody was in agreement. So I move we approve the updated IGA. Let's see. As presented. I did not, but there you go.
I've got it here somewhere.
I thought, Brendan, was I just giving the copy to sign? You have a draft, right?
I've got a draft.
Okay, he's got it. Good. Thank you, sir. It's been moved to second that the Board of County Commissioners approve the revised IGA with the Board of County Commissioners, the Custer County Sheriff's Office, Wet Mountain Fire Protection District, Custer County School District, and Custer County Emergency Medical Services, a part of the West Custer County Hospital District.
Oh, let's second it.
Had a second, sir. Sorry.
Oh, it did? Okay, so did anybody else sign this yet, or were you the first ones?
No, we were, we were the first ones, asked for the discussion at the CES.
Yeah, okay.
Further discussion? Attorney Smith, you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Comments from the public? I know it's hard without seeing the document. Yes, sir.
What's IGA?
Intergovernmental Agreement. It's, so this is a document saying that we all agree that we're going to take on shared responsibility of the maintenance and operation of the towers that these various people have equipment on. The county carries the insurance on those towers, so in the event of a meltdown, so to speak, we do have insurance to cover that. And we would split that, oh, the name just went away. We all have to pay a little bit so that the policy will be enforced.
Right, we share it.
Anyway, so that's basically what the IGA is about.
Just another way to look at it, that we have intergovernmental agreements with several things. Sheriff, for example, helps patrol the town.
Typically, we, IGAs are MOUs, and MOUs are Memorandum of Understanding. IGA, thank you, great question. Other public comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of approving this IGA? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries. I will, we will all, no, I, yes, we, no, sorry. Just ask for a chair. Thank you. Moving on, I think we're going to roll the sheriff down the agenda a little.
You're going to roll the sheriff?
Earlier, but.
I want me to text him and run him through it.
Yeah, just tell him whenever he's available, we can deal with that. Until then, let's move on, gentlemen, if you don't mind, to the approval of the auditor's report. What's the group's pleasure?
I move that we approve the auditor's report, and I would also like to put a comment on that. A thank you to him for doing such an outstanding job.
Okay.
I'll say.
It's been moved to second to approve the auditor's report discussion. I would just inform the group that the auditor did go through their audit of the county, met with us a week or so ago, and went through that auditor's report with us. And so, based on our action here, then they will formalize that, finish printing that document and provide us that. So we have certainly looked at the rough draft, not the rough draft, I'm sorry, we looked at a draft of the auditor's report and spent a couple hours with him on that. So other discussion?
Well, just to comment that the auditor was impressed with the procedures and policies that we had in place, said that we did an excellent job, found some very, very minor things we could tweak to do better, but overall gave us an A+. And I feel very good about that for all of our staff who handles all our money and those kind of things.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else?
Looks good.
Public comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries. The auditor's report for 2017 has been approved. Thank you. Let's move on, then, to the fire well in Bloomingdale's discussion. I know we have interested parties here, so we will move to that. Commissioner Cannon, I believe you asked to put this on the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
I will defer to you, sir.
Okay, yeah, I had a request and had talked with Mr. David McCain. He's here. David, raise your hand. And there was an issue with a right-of-way on a fire well that we currently have, and I did discuss that with the fire chief, as well as Clint, and the assessor's office to find out legally what our obligations were and can do. It is a landlocked piece of a wedge of about six tenths of an acre that is in the Bloomingdale's three subdivision, and it's surrounded by land that David owns, and he asked that it be considered to be vacated and we researched that. I asked Clint to take a look at it. Clint, I think it's probably a good time to discuss what your findings were.
Okay, well, I looked into this. First, I just want to explain how the law works on this. This land was subdivided back in 1982. The developer was PLP Joint Venture. That's the company that subdivided this. That's the company that actually filed the plat for recording. When a subdivision plat is filed, they dedicate certain parcels of land, they dedicate the roads to the public use, for example. They, in this case, there are easements that are set forth. The easements are for public use, for public utilities and things like that. This particular subdivision plat also has two parcels. One is designated as a fire station site, and another is, the one that's at issue here is designated as a fire well site. And I think from talking to Kit Shai as the county surveyor, and actually, the person I think that did.
He actually wrote the.
Did this plat, the subdivision plat, that the intention was back then that there be some land set aside because there was a belief the county might need some land for fire prevention or firefighting purposes. And as now is the chief of the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District as well, he said there is a possibility that some point in the future, they may have some interest in that other parcel. It's designated as a fire station site, but he doesn't see any use for this fire well site. I know Mr. McCain, since it's a pie-shaped wedge that is, because he, originally, the plat shows Lot 33 and Lot 34. Those two have now been joined together as Lot 33A. But this pie-shaped wedge is not being assessed to anybody. I checked that, you know, and it's, so the ownership of it is legally, the ownership of that piece of land is still with the original developer. They've never transferred title of that to anybody. And one of the problems we've got on this is that the county, it's a time, when a subdivision plat is recorded and it's dedicated to the county use, the county has to accept the public use. This particular plat, the county accepted the roads for public use. It did not mention anything about accepting the fire well site or the fire station site, so that's kind of left up in the air. The county legally does not have any interest, any legal interest whatsoever in that, and we'll just talk about the fire well site, because the county never accepted it. If the county had accepted it for that purpose, then I would say the county at least has some sort of a legal interest in it. My feeling right now is the county has no legal interest in it. And that being said, the question is, I mean, we have two options at this point, because I know Mr. McCain is interested in trying to acquire legal title, good legal title to that. The county really doesn't have anything to do with that. We can't give him any kind of a legal title. We don't have any, we don't even have a right-of-way there that we could surrender to him. So we could, the county can execute a quitclaim deed, relinquishing any interest it does have, which, in my opinion, is zero. The county has nothing to give him. But that's what a quitclaim deed does. It just says, you know, we're not representing, we have any ownership interest of any kind, whether it's actually owning the land or a right-of-way over the land or anything else, but to the extent that we might, because of the subdivision plat, we're surrendering, we're giving that up. But my feeling is that if the county does that, it would have to give that up, not just to Mr. McCain and his wife.
And fire, so we're just not.
But the county should also give it up to the original property owners, and the original property owner is PLP Joint Venture. The bottom line on this, for Mr. McCain and his wife to accomplish what they would like to accomplish here, I mean, this is a step the county's saying, we don't have a dog in this fight, and we don't care. But I think it's going to require quite a title action, frankly, to get legal ownership, an insurable interest where he could convey that by means of a warranty deed at some time in the future if he wants to. Because right now, he could, he can deed his Lot 33A at any time, and I'm sure that's, you know, I'm sure there's title insurance now, and it would be insured again. But if he tries to add that parcel in and say, and this is mine, too, the title insurance company is going to say, wait, there's nothing that shows ownership was ever transferred out of the name of PLP Joint Venture. So I believe that there's going to be a, it's going to have to be quite a title action where there's a judicial decree determining ownership. Now, the thing I didn't look at were the HOA covenants, and I don't know, I understand that maybe the HOA is making some claim to that. I haven't heard what's going on there, but there's no record interest for the HOAs.
Has there ever been any taxes paid on it?
No, no, it's not being assessed for taxes. If it's, if he, Mr. McCain, acquires ownership, then obviously, he'll be assessed for that parcel. But as it stands right now, there's, it's not being taxed at all.
So what do you recommend?
Um.
What, quitclaim deed?
Well, like, we can do a quitclaim deed, or if we just say we're not going to do anything because we don't own anything, we've got nothing to give him. It's possible that if he does go forward with a quiet title action, I think that a judge would probably say, well, we want the county involved in this.
So we could do that now?
We could do that now. If we did the quitclaim deed, then we wouldn't even have to be involved in it at a later time. If that's, if he does decide to take legal action to get the ownership, you could say, well, the county's out of it. They've already quit claimed whatever interest they have, so it would just be between him and PLP Joint Venture, which, if you look at that plat, the P's part of it, Mr. and Mrs. Pollard, I think, lived in Minnesota, and Mr. Livingston lived in Texas. I mean, that's down at the bottom where they signed some things. So I don't, I doubt that that's still an ongoing, you know, concern of any kind, and whether those people are even around or not, I don't know. So it would be that, I don't have a particular recommendation one way or the other. I mean, it's simple to do the quitclaim deed. It doesn't create any liability on the part of the county, because we're not representing, we're owning anything. And in fact, in the draft resolution I prepared at your request, that makes that very, very clear, that the county is not saying that it owns anything. And I don't, legally, I'm satisfied. The county does not have any legal interest. But just the fact that it was dedicated to the county could create some kind of a possible interest where a court may want something, may want something from the county.
So we could avoid that?
If we. That would be the only reason to do this now, because, I mean, it doesn't, Mr. McCain can't take this quitclaim deed and record it, and, I mean, it needs to be recorded, but he can't take it and say, okay, now I'm the owner of it, because it would also list PLP Joint Venture on there.
Now, it was labeled fire well. Does Kit feel that there is not going to be a future county use for this as well?
No, he said absolutely not. And I think, I'm not sure when the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District was formed, but it's, you know, now it's covered by, I think it was at a time when they were thinking they might have to have their own local volunteer fire department up there. But Kit said it possibly could be used at some time in the future for a substation, like the one we have down at the airport now.
He did say, Jane, I had talked with Kit at length about it, the other site is more conducive to cistern, storage of water, the well site there to cover the area, and so that's why this was sort of an unnecessary move, in his view, initially.
Well, it just kind of makes sense to me, since we've gone this far with this, we've had this discussion, rather than at some point in the future where a judge gets us back into already here. It just makes sense for me to say, let's go ahead and do the quitclaim, have our hands washed of it, and Mr. McCain and PLP can work out whatever they need to work out.
I agree.
And I would like to know what Mr. McCain has to say on this.
You want to make a motion first, or?
Well, before we do that, let me interject a couple things. We'll certainly open this up for public comment, no question. I looked at, I pulled the plat maps on this entire subdivision. I did not see a fire station.
It's on the other side.
On there. It was on the backside.
Yeah, I can show you if you want to flip it over from the fire well side.
This was only printed on one side.
Oh, okay. The one, the original. It's there.
I did not see that.
It's on the other part of it.
It's at the junction of County Road 358 and Junkins Loop.
Right.
It has a parcel number. It's 2.26 acres.
County Road 358.
And Junkins Loop.
The pie wedge parcel is 0.6 acres.
Right.
It does not have a parcel number.
Right.
It did not show up.
Yep. With all due respect, sir, let me finish, and then, as I indicated, we'll get to public comment. I read it on this plat that lots, streets, easements, and fire protection sites, as indicated here on, which is platted. Are we considering doing something in opposition to that?
No.
Or is the fire station going to satisfy that?
No, that's, that's still there. We're not, and the draft resolution specifically states that we're not doing anything with respect to the fire station site, and this is not setting a precedent. This is only dealing with the fire well site. Nobody can come in and say, well, you gave up your interest there, so you have to give up your interest in the fire well site. I made that clear.
Good. And I want to take exception with respect, sir. Commissioner Cannon said that this was a landlocked piece of property. As I understand, it is not landlocked. It is surrounded on two sides, the third side being County Road.
That's good clarification meant at the other point.
And then, we do not have any legal interest in this piece of property.
No, the county never accepted that. And that's, I mean, and Kit pointed that out to me, but the county did accept the roads, you know? Nobody can come in and say, well, we want to take that road back. The county would have to agree to that. But we never accepted that fire well site or the fire station site either.
Yes, no?
I do not believe that this should come before the county commissioners. I think this is an issue with PLP Joint Ventures and whoever wants to lay a claim against them. I can tell you, I probably will not support entering into a resolution pertaining to this, because I don't believe we have any legal interest in this piece of property whatsoever.
That's what he said.
Respectfully.
Yes.
I disagree.
Okay.
Respectfully. It was designated for county use as a well site.
True.
And if it gets before a judge, the judge will say, what does the county say about this, before the judge makes whatever ruling the judge will make? And therefore, at that point, we'll be drawn in and have to do something.
Got no problem with that.
And my feeling is, as Attorney Smith said, there is absolutely zero harm in quitclaiming something we don't even own or have an interest in, but it will preclude us from having to come back to this discussion again at some time in the future if Mr. McCain and PLP do get into litigation over this. It's not really litigation. It's not really litigation, it's, it's quite title. Judge decides how we're going to do it. So my feeling is, since it's in front of us now, it is absolutely zero harm to us. It'll get us out of it for a future issue that most likely will come up at some point. While we have it here, my feeling is, let's just clean it up now. That's just my feeling.
Okay. What's the group's pleasure?
Well, I move that we do exactly what Clint was asked, give a resolution to do a quitclaim deed, to get out from under it now, any claims that we might have against it. And carry forward.
And I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, that the county sign a resolution for a quick claim?
Quit.
Quit, sorry. Make sure we get that right. Quick claim on the said property of the fire well site. Discussion, further discussion? I think I've probably spoke to my concerns. I don't, I just don't believe we have any business doing this. It's, we're just not legally tied to this property, so, anything else, gentlemen? Public comment? Yes, sir?
It's all about landowners, just connections to Louisiana, but just Colorado, about having homesteaded, if Mr. McCain could, since nobody's paying taxes on it, couldn't he just homestead the property?
It wouldn't be homesteading, it would be adverse possession, an adverse possession claim. And, again, I don't want to give Mr. McCain legal advice, but if you claim ownership to a piece of property, and your claim is against any other legal right, and it's open and notorious, you know, if he put a fence around it, that would be a pretty good indication that he's claiming he owns it, for example. But that takes 20 years to establish ownership through adverse possession, and it would, and again, it's getting more into legal advice for him, I don't want to get into that, but it, it doesn't necessarily have to just be, because you bought your property, what, four years ago?
Yeah.
So it doesn't just have to go, it could go back farther than that, to the previous property owners, all the way back to 1982, possibly. But that's, I don't take any position on that.
So Mr. McCain, theoretically, since the commission has given up any rights, he could put a fence around it, and if nobody contested it, theoretically, it's his property to use.
Needs to get legal advice to determine that.
Unless he wants to get a tie, clear title, and he's going to have to deal with the implications of that.
Yeah, it, I think, I mean, honest, it's going to require, to get that cleared up to the point where he can deed it to somebody else, it's going to require a court decree.
For as long as it stays in his family, and nobody contests it.
Well.
Well, I don't think this is the place to get into trying to decide the legality of what may or may not occur in the future. Are there other public comments about voting on the MOU? Yes, sir?
Well, there's an issue been going on with this ever since the day we brought the property, basically. Last year, we was in a courtroom over here with the judge, that he owns the roads, the county and that association, and these well sites, according to her, she said, "There's no deed for the roads, there's no deed for the fire, because them are association-ish property, because it was in the plat. The plat should not be changed, once it's set and accepted." There's another issue that, we are, at present time, we're looking at 20,000 gallon storage cisterns up at 358 and Junkins Loop, and possibly, in the future, instead of having a well down there, according to the local drillers, there's not enough water to support a fire well. As money, if and when money comes available, we was looking to put 10,000 gallons on that six tenths acre of water storage, in place of a well, as a first, if there's a fire in area, that would be their first location, rather than going to turn back up to the county road. And that's the future that Blumenfeld three board has in mind.
Again, my contention is, yeah, I don't think that's the issue. I don't think we have an issue here. I appreciate your comments, certainly. Other public comments? Yes, sir?
There's been confusion about this since the time that I looked into the property and I bought the property. I talked to, of course, Stuart Title, I've talked to the assessor's office, and the trainer's office, and just about everybody that I could find in. P L P Ventures did originally develop that subdivision, and as the, as the lots were sold, they were transferred over to a homeowners' association. The problem that I ran into was that the assessor's office showed no record of ownership. And this is one of those things where it's kind of, you can't see the fork of trees. And it had to do with fencing, and maintenance, and all kinds of things involved in this. And Kit Shy was the one who said, "Read the upper right-hand corner of that large plat map, and you will see that the roads and those fire well lots were dedicated to the county. That means they were given to the county." So I contacted an attorney in Salida about this, and he agreed that that is the case. Now, I'm not an attorney, I, I'm not a land broker, I don't know any of that. All I know is that it's a pain in the butt for me, it gets into fencing issues with these people in this homeowners' association. I just want to know who owns the damn thing. P L P Ventures does not exist. I even tried to contact Victoria Livingston, who was one half of the partnership. She's refused to contact back to me. As far as the Secretary of State is concerned, I can't find any record that these people exist as a legal entity anymore. And it didn't show up at the assessor's office, or any of the records, at the time I purchased this land. And it just, it, it just involves a lot of contentious problems here. And if the county owns it, then, according to this attorney in Salida, you guys are responsible for it, you're responsible for maintenance, the liability, and everything involved. I don't know about all these quiet titles and, and things like that. All I know is that I'd like to have the land, if I can have it, back before we, I even knew any of this, I even offered to buy it. And these people were basically trying to either sell or lease me some ground that they don't own. The moot point about all this is, who owns this land? If the HOA does not, then they don't have a say-so with it.
Okay. All right, let me.
Just quickly, let me respond. Sir, that is exactly why our counselor said that there's a legal issue here that needs to be determined by a court. It is not anything that we can do. So all you're asking us to do is if we have an interest in this property, we're relinquishing it to both parties, that's all the quitclaim deed does. But as far as the ownership, that is way beyond the purview of.
Does the county own it by adverse possession?
No.
No.
Attorney Smith, I would ask again, in your legal opinion, does the county own this property?
No. Doesn't own the dirt, and it doesn't own a right-of-way.
So I'm assuming that satisfies that portion of it. The county does not own this property, okay? Regardless of what anybody else tells you, I'm going with our attorney tells us that we do not own that.
We pay them a lot.
And, again, I maintain, if we don't own it, I think you're talking to the wrong people, but that's my opinion as a commissioner.
So I would like to hear Clint's resolution, because that is a clean way of doing that.
Well, I mean, I don't have, I'm not advocating one position over another here. If, in fact, he files the quiet title action, which is the only way this is going to be settled at this time, as long as it took me to prepare this draft resolution, that's how long it would take me to prepare an answer to the lawsuit, saying the county makes no claim. You know, we just, we don't want to participate in the case, whatever the judge decides is fine with the county.
And speaking to the resolution, I, I'd like, for the record, to show if I'm correct. If I'm not, you correct me. I believe Commissioner Canada asked you to prepare a resolution, is that correct? It was not from the county commissioners?
It was, yeah, it was talked.
For us to consider.
Yeah.
Okay. Further public comment? Yes, sir?
I used to be the next-door neighbor to this property, but I live in Blumenfeld, and I do support the quitclaim deed, quitclaim deed, so.
Okay.
We was, we was in court last year, and the judge ruled that that was dead wrong to the association.
That's, that's up to you guys.
Yeah. I appreciate your comments, and that's what they are, is comments, certainly. Thank you for that. Others? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of signing a resolution, basically authorizing a county to sign a quitclaim deed? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Nay. Motion carries. This is a draft, sir, does that mean that you will?
I'll redo the resolution in final form, and have a quitclaim deed, I'll get it to Brenda, she could actually have it for you this afternoon, I suppose.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. We'll move on. The next item of business is the sheriff's discussion with the commissioners concerning the school resource officer, Sheriff Barley. Welcome.
Afternoon.
Oh, really? I didn't know.
Is marathon in this one?
I've been training, I'm ready.
This gentleman.
Thanks.
Hi, Kelly, how are you?
Good.
He's responsible.
You got a bottle of water, you're doing okay? Hi, gentlemen, so, I've kind of just briefly talked with you guys before about the idea of trying to get some additional resources in the school for security and such, to go above what the posse does on, basically, on a daily basis there. And so, working with the school, and primarily with Mr. Paylor, the superintendent, we were working through some things. He, he was able to come up with about $25,000, well, with $25,000 for the 2019, 2020, or 2018, 2019 school year, which would be, would start in August, and go through May. He has $25,000. Knowing that I wasn't going to be able to fund a full-time employee to do the school resource officer position, and doing some research on some grants, there are a couple grants out there that we're looking at applying for, but, again, those, those won't be until later in this year. They could possibly start in 2019. And then, quite frankly, a lot of the, the basis for those grant requests, and for those grant monies being awarded, I believe, last year, there were about $400 million in requests, and about $90 million in awards. Like, one in 21, one in 125 agencies were awarded the grants for the COPS grant. There's another grant that we were hoping that we could use, but then the legislature decided that it could be used for school security, but not for school resource officers. So, pretty slim chance we're going to get any grant funding to be able to, to make that happen, from, from my office's standpoint. So, we're back to that $25,000 that the school was able to put aside for that. Now, in my talks with, with Mr. Paylor, I told him that, you know, if we were to do a school resource officer, it would have to be a mutual, mutually-supported endeavor, meaning that the county couldn't fund the entire position, nor would I expect that the school could either. We're both financially strapped. So, I went to Mr. Paylor, and I, and I basically told him, "Look, it does not look good on the, on, on funding this through grants on our end, so, highly, highly doubtful I'm going to be able to come up with much." And that's when he said, "Well, listen, so I've got 20, I'm, I'm going back to the school board, I'm hoping to get another 10, maybe we can do something with that." Well, the board approved an additional five, so they have $25,000. So then we met again, and he said, "I have this money, what can we do?" And I said, "Well, I'll tell you what, how about if we do an off-duty program with the deputies?" So, they work their normal workday, their four-day workday, their 40 hours, and then they have three days off. I'm sure that I would have some that would be happy to, to work one day during the day at the school. We pay them off-duty work, much like we did some of the other festivals here, when, like Beanstalk and so forth, where they're on the county payroll, per se, because they're in uniforms, so they, as an, my employee, they have workman's comp, social security, all that stuff, but ultimately, they're paid by the contractor, by the, you know, the contractor that's, that's signing an agreement with us for, for extra work. He was like, "That's a great idea. I'll, I'll reimburse your officers, or deputies, up to $25,000 for the school year. Can you make it happen?"
Does that cover the school year for that?
So, it does. So, so I went back, and, and he said, "How much hourly are you going to pay?" And I said, "Well, you have $25,000, let me go back, let me punch the numbers and see what that looks like." Now, understanding that if, if a deputy's making 17 bucks an hour working on his normal days, in order to get them to work when they're not, when they're supposed to be off, you got to pay them at least that, it can't be 12 bucks an hour, they're not going to do it. So I punched the numbers, $18 an hour, eight hours a day, comes up to about $24,000 for the year. But that doesn't, but that doesn't count for Thanksgiving week off, Christmas week off, and all that, so it's going to be well under the $25,000 at $18. So I floated it to my deputies, and said, "Hey, would you be willing to at $18 an hour?" And almost unanimously, they were like, "Yes, absolutely, we would."
So, if I could interrupt, please. The way you came up with the number, did you include extracurricular activities, sporting events?
Did not, no.
So we, is the proposal that after-school plays, sports events, and those kind of things would not have a resource officer?
That's correct. Well, we, we typically do that with posse members, anyway, Jay, so, so we wouldn't be paying, we would let the posse, because, again, now, by doing this, it, it kind of takes away from some of the things that the posse does, and they like doing. So, typically, you know, I would like, ideally, I'd like to do nine hours a day, half an hour before school starts, to half an hour after school starts. But what we're going to do is, we're going to go half an hour before school starts, to about 3:30, and then we're going to have posse in there from 3:30 to 4:30. So instead of them doing the hour in the morning, they're going to do an hour in the afternoon. It's still covered, it works great, I think it'll work out. We're going to be able to go well under what the school has budgeted, which I think they can appreciate, and will appreciate. And so then, of course, you know, Mark's like, "So what's the school covering?" And I said, "Well, or what's the county going to cover in that?" What, you know, what are you, because we're, we're paying for all of it. I said, "Absolutely." So what we're paying is, we're paying workman's comp, we're paying the social security taxes on it, we're providing the vehicle, all the equipment, the knowledge, all of that stuff, that's what we're providing. He said, "Works for me, I'm good."
We're paying them insurance benefits as well, right?
Got a quick one for you.
All the things that go with it. But it'll be a straight rate, not overtime.
Right, yeah, exactly.
But you can't do that anyway, I mean.
Right, that's right.
What would be addition to that would be the county share of matching?
Retirement, or any of that stuff, right.
Okay. Do you have any idea what that would be?
I do not, I do not, Jay.
Because that's a, that's a hard cost for the county.
It is, it is, absolutely, it is.
And I'd like, I would like to have a feel for what, we're talking about a couple hundred dollars, or tens of thousands.
Right, right, I know what you mean, though, yeah.
I'd like to have a feel for that.
Okay, and that's, that's fair enough, that's a, that's a really good point.
I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, that's the one that I hadn't.
Okay, and Shannon, what's the commitment? It's going to be four, four days a week?
Yeah, four days a week, eight hours a day, 32 hours.
If the guy can't do it, or is there somebody, or you're going to have to force into that, or we're going to be obligated to do it, or are we going to leave it empty?
So, it, it would be left empty unless, so this is the way it works, and, so I developed the off-duty program, a work program at Canyon City. I have the whole contract, it's, it's all good. Mr. Smith has been able to look over it, he said it's good. I knew it was anyways, just because we had to go through our legal stuff at Canyon City, and we used it every week down there. So, what it does is this, so we have a work opportunity, so it'll, it'll be scheduled for the whole year, and we'll have a schedule up, and officer, deputies can go in there, and they can sign up for the days they want to work. Their eligibility to work off-duty hinges upon the fact that if they sign up, they're obligated to do that. And if they can't meet that commitment, because things come up, then they are responsible to find someone else to meet that obligation. If they violate that obligation, or they go back on it, then they lose their privilege of being able to sign up for off-duty work, which, at $18 an hour, and you're working 30, you know, if you work- Which, at $18 an hour, and you're working 30, you know, if you work one day a week for four weeks, I mean, that's, you know, that'd be 450 bucks a month that they're looking at losing potentially. And quite honestly, my deputies, I mean, they could use that extra money. So, so that's how we do that. Then what we'll do is, is we'll keep track of it and then monthly, we bill the school on the hours, because in the contract it says that we do not guarantee that there'll be someone there every single day for eight hours, because things come up. You know, we get into September and we have a fire and all of a sudden, all my guys are working everywhere. I mean, and they'll, they'll understand that, but that's part of the contract. And so then we'll just send them a monthly bill. They write the county a check for that, comes back in. I've already talked, uh, to Ms. Hobby. She said, that's easy enough to, to balance that. It'll work out.
Uh, do your deputies currently work four-ten's?
Yes.
So they?
Oh, well, they like to, they, they would love to work four-ten's. It usually ends up being elevens and twelves, but.
But they would have a regularly scheduled weekday?
They do.
Then they would not be working.
We have what's called frontside, backside. So frontside's Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Backside's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So everybody'd have an equal opportunity to sign up?
Yes.
Based on their schedule?
The backside, really Thursday's the only available day, but, um, that we'll work it out. And, and they get to, they get to move shifts around every three months anyways, so. They do.
Can you talk to us about having an armed officer in school?
Sure. So, so and I guess, do you have a specific question you want to go to instead of?
Well, pointedly, will they be armed?
Absolutely. They will be dressed down, however, they'll be in a polo shirt similar to this or a long-sleeved one. We'll designate something that is not the, the formal uniform that you see them out in town on, only because we're trying to foster.
Some relationship.
Oh, yeah, relationship and trust in, in that. And so they will be dressed down. They'll still have their duty belt. They'll have their firearm, yeah, because what's the point in having a, a police officer there if he doesn't have his firearm? I mean, that is, that is part of the point, right? So, um, I've, I've talked to Mark and, uh, Mr. Paylor. I apologize for the record there. So we're, we're gonna try to incorporate much more than a guy or a gal that's standing at the front door, screening everybody coming in, walking around, you know, on the police. We're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, and they're, uh, they're gonna go in and they're gonna, they're gonna read the first and second graders. They're gonna help the reading teachers out. And they're gonna go to special ed. They're gonna help out those teachers. They're gonna go to the government class and they'll talk about, uh, you know, Bill of Rights and citizens' rights under the First Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment. They're gonna talk about, and they're gonna, they're gonna get involved in some of the curriculum and some of the classes around there. Some of my, some of my deputies might be able to help out a little bit in English. Other ones, it'd probably be good if they sat in the English class. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be more directed towards being in the school, because again, there's a lot of information that goes through all those kids. Those kids see and hear a lot. They can talk to the kiddos, you know, find out stuff going on in the community, but more importantly, you build trust with the kids and them. And it becomes a positive relationship.
For the public, certainly for myself, I don't come from a big line of police training. Could you stand up and, and talk to us about how your firearm is holstered and how that would happen in the school? Can somebody walk by and jerk a pistol out?
Okay, so, so you're talking, so you want me to stand up and do it?
Yes, if you don't mind.
So, uh, so by policy, none of my, uh, deputies are allowed to carry what's called a level-one holster, which basically, see that in the old days, it just sits in there and you just pull it out. This gun does not come out of the holster on its own. It has to be manipulated to come out of the holster. So this is considered level-two. But all of my deputies, and myself included, when we have our duty belts on, we carry a level-three holster. So level-two means that it has at least a one retention system. This one has a button on the side, so I have to push this button while I'm extracting my firearm. A level-three means that it not only doesn't have a button similar to this, but it has another one, which generally is a thumb release inside. So in order for someone to get your holster or your weapon out of your holster, they have to know how to do it. And, you know, if, if a deputy is, is, uh, cognizant or they're, they're aware at all.
Not cold.
If they're not out cold, that's right. Anybody even touches their gun, you're taught immediately, you put pressure down on your holster like that. And then we teach and we train, um, every couple of months on all that, on weapons retention, so that it never gets taken away from you. So we don't have to worry, because that question did get brought up. So, hey, you have an officer in the school. What if a kid comes up and just pulls the gun out of the holster? That's not, I mean, I'm not saying it could never happen, because you never say never, but of course, that's, I mean, we're trained in that. And, and there are no absolutes, you know? If something were to happen to a deputy and they're unconscious, I mean, somebody has a couple of seconds. Or I mean, if they have a minute, they can figure out how to get it out.
And then as you explained to me too, it's not just putting pressure down on. That officer's gonna respond physically somehow.
Right, because I mean, you know, kids do jack around or whatever, but they get, they learn very quickly. This is not, this is not a toy. It's not something we don't, we don't pull it out. We don't look at it. It's, that's not what it is. Yeah, I mean, usually it's gonna cause, you know, you touch my gun, pressure on it, and then some blunt force trauma is, is gonna come short you thereafter. If you're not not cold, right? If you're not, if you're not very, very careful.
Hey Shannon, I see you have an external hammer.
Yes.
Yours is cocked.
Right.
So, but there's a safety hammer.
Okay, so.
Right.
So this is, this is called cocked and locked. This is a, this is a 1911 handgun and they make them up. There's, this is, it's a pair of arms, but they made, there's a lot of manufacturers make these. None of my deputies carry a weapon like this, nor do I, when I'm in my duty rig. Most of them carry Glocks or Siggs. All of those pistols are carried exactly the same as this is. You just can't see the hammer, cause it's enclosed, like a Glock. Actually, this has one more safety than a Glock does, because it's got the thumb safety on the side right here. A Glock doesn't have that. The Glock has the only, the, the two safeties it has is the deputy's brain and his finger, or her finger. So, so this is not, uh, typically what you're gonna see deputies carrying cocked and locked, from a visible standpoint.
Uh, I will beg your forgiveness, coming from the educational field, the last thing as an educator, even as a former educator or taxpayer, I'd wanna see is a bunch of our deputies trying to be the best friends these kids have ever had in the world.
Yeah, so that's not a goal.
Or a goal.
So that there's respect and you can be friendly without being friends. I think we all, I mean, now, kids have a harder time with those lines than adults do by and large. So, so yeah, we're, I mean, and when I go to the school, I'm friends with them. I mean, I coached basketball there for 10 years. I high-five kids, hey, what's going on? You know, what are you doing? Are you getting good grades? You know, I, I, I talk to them like that, but I'm not like, hey, what have you been doing this weekend? You know, that's.
Look at my phone!
Right, right. Hey, did you see this picture? You know, although if I got a good fucker or bull, I might be like, hey, look at this deer I killed.
Uh, any additional training to the officers that would be going in there?
So I would love to. There, there is specific school resource officer certification courses. They're, uh, usually conducted in the summer. And if you have a dedicated one person that, a deputy or officer that goes into the school and works there, that's their primary job. You usually send them to those, just because it's resources. But because it's gonna be rotating, there's no way I can afford to send all of them. It's, it's pretty expensive. And typically, grants cover those as part of school resource officer programs.
Well, thank you for your demonstration.
Thank you.
And the principal.
So, so I have, I have an MOU here. Um, I'll just stay standing up, so I don't have my back there, but so I have, it's the same MOU twice, because Mr. Paylor needs two copies. But, um, I'm the one that signs it, because, uh, Mr. Smith said, hey, listen, it needs to be between the sheriff's office and the school district, not between the county, just so that, to keep the county out, because while we do have some financial responsibility, um, it's the sheriff's office that's responsible for that, is execution. So unless you're opposed to it, I'll sign this, but before I do and give it to them, I'll get some numbers to you. I'll, I'll work with Ms. Hobby and I'll get some numbers to you.
It's not gonna be significant enough. I'm thinking that safety for the children, or whatever it's gonna be, it's not gonna be significant.
I agree with you.
I'm curious in knowing the number, but I will not hold this up.
I, I am as well, uh, Jay, and so I will, um, I'll sign this, cause he would like to present this to the board, um, this evening, to, to the school board. But, but I will give you that information, because I need to have those numbers in there as well, cause I want to know, because again, I need to be able to make sure my, everything's gonna line out.
Good. Okay, group's pleasure. I would move that we authorize the sheriff to sign the MOU with the school district to provide a school resource officer.
We don't have to authorize him.
Yeah. He said two separate taxing.
Well, we're, yeah, but we're paying.
But yeah, it's coming through our, it's coming through our treasury department.
It's all bundled. It's using, yeah, the rest of it.
I'll second, I'll second it, because it's coming through our treasury department.
Okay, so actually the motion is, uh, we are already paying a significant part and we're a lot, we have understood this well enough that it's not gonna interfere with the normal duties that the county needs to be performed for the rest of the public. And it's a good thing to do for the safety of the.
It's been moved and seconded that we authorize the sheriff to sign an MOU with Custer County School, to provide a school resource officers on a off-duty basis. And that we will continue, uh, fulfilling our financial obligations to those off-duty officers as employees of the county. Discussion?
I, I would just like to add, um, I think we, the, the, the school, school board, uh, superintendent, they need kudos to, that's a, a big leap of faith that should throw in a chunk of, of $25,000, because I know their budget's tight as well. So, I mean, we, I have to commend them that they really jumped out there to, to try to make that happen, because it is a concern and it scares, I mean, scares us all that, because none of us are exempt from this anymore. It happens, it's happening everywhere, so.
Well, certainly, carry our thanks and appreciation for that. If you care, do absolutely. Further discussion, gentlemen? Comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Wanted just to comment, then a question. The comment is, I assume there's some sort of, uh, communication of officers reading the third graders, that there's a problem elsewhere in the building?
Yes, yeah, so we're gonna have a.
Don't get them so involved, they forget what they're doing there. I love teaching third graders.
And again, I don't want to know your script.
No, you're, no, you're right. That's a, that's a great question and a great point. You're exactly right. We have to work through some of that.
My question is, is, is liability addressed, in case your officers have to be called away for another emergency, that parents or the school don't come back and sue you for not performing the duties that contract you do?
So, another great question. So that's in the contract? So that there's an actual contract that goes on that, that identifies us from that? Because there are no guarantees that we're there because of the nature of our job, that could be called away?
Yes, sir. So it's easy to understand a temporary lapse, but what if you have a, a major catastrophe, where you're gonna be called away for an extended length of time? Do you have a posse, the posse you could call to fill in?
Yes. So the posse's still gonna be there every day anyhow. Um, they're, they're just gonna supplement our efforts for the off-duty work. But yes, so that we use the posse as a resource all the time anyhow, that's, they've been doing it, so yes.
I'd like to ask one unrelated question. It's not my business, just a few of your thoughts. When your deputies work a 10-hour shift and they wind up working 11 or 12, are they on overtime for this?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would ask a question for your professional opinion. Do you think this community is gonna have a problem having an armed officer in that school?
I, well, I would hope not. I don't, I don't believe they would.
You haven't really gotten a sense of that.
I have not. I think that, I think that the community overall, they appreciate any efforts we can go to, to help increase any type of security, because again, we've had too many examples now across the country that no community is exempt from. And I mean, we've had attacks on Amish schools. We've had attacks, you know, on, on large metropolitan schools. So, uh, you know, and unfortunately, it's always the act of one irrational person. It's not a group, I mean, typically. So I, I hope people understand that we are not immune to it. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen. You know, we, we pray every day that it never does, but we prepare in case it would. So I don't believe they would, because again, we're not trying to go in there militarily and, and, you know, we're screening every kid at the door and all that. We're not doing that. We're trying to integrate into the school, but to have a presence.
I hope you understand why I ask. I support having an armed school resource officer. To me, if they're not armed, what's the point? Uh, if you don't feel safe at church, come to the cowboy church. You're gonna constantly. Yeah, as, as do the Baptists. They're quietly going about that, so, yeah, gosh, that's great. Further public comment. Prior to voting, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of authorizing the sheriff to enter into an MOU with the Custer County School District for Resource Officers? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Go for it.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
It'll be Chad's phone number. Mark wants to do it. You never respond. Maybe you emailed.
Let me just offer a handshake of friendship. Gratitude, thank you, buddy.
Go easy. Go easy. Go easy on.
You may have emailed, but it didn't, uh, I didn't get it on text.
Next item of business, public comment. If we haven't warned you out. Anybody, any public comment to come before the group? Yes, sir?
So this is my first meeting with the, you know, some of this kind of stuff in the state. I'm thoroughly impressed with the way you are operating and the way you're getting an office. Chairs, tables.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, as you have observed, the fact that we may vote differently, I don't believe undermines anything that we're trying to do as a commission that, uh, I think we're very confident in that and, uh, we thank you for that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Other public comments before we adjourn?
No, the only thing is, I was gonna do something tourism board, but I'm gonna get on next week's agenda. I'm already on one.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that.
There's, well, that's something not even to do with tourism, but there's a couple of things.
Your other thing was non-tourism board related. I couldn't tell that for sure, so. It's fine, go ahead, sir.
A member of the board where tourism was an issue, what is a tourism board?
Yeah, great question. I'll defer, cause we have a member of the tourism board here.
What it is, is, um, about 10 years ago, um, the, a lodging tax was presented. And what it is, is anybody that comes in and stays at any of our lodging facilities, they're taxed 2.9%. That's all we, we're going to do about this special. The lodging tax was developed and formed at the tourism board. It's a help to market and promote people to come here, like to our events, you know, shop the shops, you know, mountains. Bring, it's for economic development. It's to bring economy here. And that money that the tourism, that the lodging people collect, it goes to the state and comes back to us, and we use that to market this area. And we can only do marketing out, for outside areas, if we can change it. After that, it's responsibility of, and to the chamber to market once it's within. But that's what it is. We're limited. When you guys go stay anywhere, you guys are paying a lodging tax. You just don't realize it.
So.
Well, you know, we're, we're going forward, you know, um, just some, you know, it's just a positive thing and, and sometimes things happen and stuff, so. So, and it's about us educating the, the public. And the business is that the business had a vote for this. We've had a vote for this, so. And it's under the county. Um, I don't know if I'm missing anything. There's more to it.
Just for short. I thought the lodging tax was 2.0%.
I could be wrong.
Yes.
I'm thinking the state is 2.9%. If you charge anything more than that, we have to actually do a special dispute. You know, and it used to be we were lucky to get $20,000 a year. And your marketing, that's not much money. But now with the vacation by owner and those things that legally have to pay, besides all the others, we have more money.
Thanks for being here.
And feel free to comment anytime. We really appreciate when people talk to us.
Yes.
Commentating anything. We appreciate it. I mean that sincerely.
Okay, further public comment? I would just say thank you, folks, for being here. Thank you for, uh, your conduct as well. We, we, to the best of our ability, want to avoid a lot of hate and discontent. We are fully acceptable of people expressing their opinions and their ideas and, and we always hope that will be done in an appropriate manner. And you certainly have my respect, uh, today, folks. Thank you for your comments and appreciate that.